Call the Williston City Council meeting February 22, 2017 to order. And can Chris Wilks lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy Rokol.
Here.
Strong.
Here.
Hornstein.
Here.
Spencey.
Yes.
Here.
All right. We're going to amend the agenda, right? Today, I think items A and D of the consent agenda are being pulled, so.
Do you want an explanation as to why?
Go ahead.
So on item 4A, the minutes were not completed, and on 4D, there was a discrepancy in the report that was uploaded. It wasn't actually the final agreement that was approved by the school district.
Those will probably come back at the next meeting.
Is that number D, not?
D.
D, sorry.
All right. Public communication. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council commission boards and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address this?
My name is Barbara Plaza. On February 6th, I'm just wondering, are you, our mayor, Gonzalez, are you still going to be working in the police department?
No.
Because you were full dressed coming out of the car, and I'd like to know why you're in the police department still, if you're going to be our mayor.
Oh.
Does the community know that if there's going to be somebody transported, let the police department do that? Why are you doing it? Let the community know.
Oh, okay.
Because I'd like to know, because if you're going to be a part of the police department still, you still haven't addressed the November 6, 2015 incident where Sergeant McNally pulled me at gunpoint on my property.
Just so everybody's aware, I had volunteered in the interim until our interim chief was out, helping out, so. All right. Any other members of the public that would like to speak? All right. Item 3, Justice. Commander, Public Matters? I'm sorry, item 3A, Status Report on Our Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee. And Dusty, go ahead and take that. Do you need us to move, Dusty?
No, I don't think so. Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Good evening, council members. Dusty Dooley, city planner. We'd like to go ahead and give you an update on the workings of our cannabis ad hoc committee, which the council created back in January. Just a quick disclaimer. This is preliminary information. You're going to see some information that's hopefully helpful to the council as they provide guidance to staff, but this doesn't represent any approved information. So I just wanted to put it out there that don't take the information, this is PowerPoint, as the law, that you could then act to as far as starting any cannabis business. So I just wanted to have that little disclaimer there. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to update the city council again on the workings of the ad hoc committee, receive public comments, and receive direction from the city council on how to proceed. Some topics of discussion, and by the way, this should be on your tablets potentially, if it's easier to look at them, so you're welcome to turn around, obviously, as well. We're looking for direction from the full council on types of cannabis businesses that the city should permit. The direction from the council was to focus on medical cannabis businesses that are subject to MRSA and not recreational, which was recently allowed by ALMA. We'll have recommendations from the committee that we'll go over, but we certainly want to run that past the full council and get guidance from all of you. Beyond just the types of cannabis businesses to permit or allow within the city, we'd also like to have a discussion on direction from the full council on where those cannabis businesses should be located, both from a zoning perspective as well as establishing any appropriate buffers from other types of land uses. Hopefully, we'll have time to talk about the level of review or the permit process, whether we want to have different types of cannabis activities be in the discretionary world, like a use permit, versus an administrative process where staff's essentially looking for an application to meet certain identified standards, at which point it would be approved at the staff level. And then finally, get a sense of what the next steps are as far as giving a full draft ordinance back to the council for potential adoption. This, I think I maybe got 10 minutes to talk here, but you're welcome to stop me at any point. So we basically started, us being staff and working with Mayor Gonzalez and Councilwoman Strong, as the ad hoc committee. We started again by looking at the various license types that the state allows under MRSA, and many are related to cultivation, broken up into whether it's indoor, outdoor, or like a mixed light scenario, like you might see in a greenhouse. Light depth is a term that's used. And it's also broken into the size, whether it's 5,000 square feet, 10,000, or up to 22,000 square feet for indoor. Outdoor, you can actually go up to an acre. Another cultivation type is nursery, which is essentially where you start the plants. They don't reach a level of maturity, so it's a little bit different than the full-on start-to-finish cultivation. Then you have a couple of different manufacturing licenses. This is where they take the raw product and make an extract of it, or some type of oil, and it can be made into all kinds of things, including, I learned, dog biscuits. Testing lab, dispensaries, distribution, transportation. Ultimately, the ad hoc committee is recommending that we allow for a number of businesses matched up with, again, the state licensing categories. And the cannabis businesses that the ad hoc committee recommends permitting are the indoor grow categories, again, broken up into three separate levels. A small one being under 5,000 feet, a medium cultivation site being 5,001, 10,000 square feet, and then a large indoor operation cultivation, this, again, this is all medical, being 10,001 to 22,000 square feet. Again, recommend that nurseries be allowed. Manufacturing, provided they're not using volatile solvents, so manufacture two for products not using volatile solvents. Testing lab, dispensaries, distribution and transportation businesses. The cannabis businesses that the ad hoc committee recommending that the city prohibit include outdoor and the mixed light cultivation, and that's mainly due to odor concerns, and there's some, again, some discussion about all of this within the staff report or agenda summary that was included in your packet there. Then beyond the outdoor cultivation, the committee's also recommending that manufacturing using volatile solvents such as butane be disallowed at this point.
Can you step back to the cultivation? You're listing here the businesses that are prohibitive. Prohibited are the outdoor up to 10,000 square feet.
All three of them, up to 5,000, the medium size and the large size, yeah.
Yeah, but 22,000 is the maximum size for indoor.
And outdoor is an acre, I believe.
I think that's just describing what the state.
No, yeah, okay. Well, I guess my question is, if this doesn't specifically, unless I'm misreading it, prohibit outdoor growing because of the size configurations?
So cannabis business to prohibit, the type one, which is up to 5,000 square feet, so that'd be zero to five.
Right.
And then you've got the.
Five to 10,000.
Five to 10, and then 10 to one acre are all there and listed.
Is that, oh, maybe it's not on.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, not enough.
I'm sorry, okay. It's the next screen, okay.
No problem. And then manufacturing, again, using volatile solvents. We spoke with our fire department folks, and they still have a number of concerns, as do a lot of jurisdictions, and it may be that it's just that we're being precautionary, but without a number of standards in place, without the state having their protections in place, the committee felt that it was appropriate not to allow that use at this point. I do have a note in there, and I think I discussed about it within the, discussed it within the staff report, that we are being a little bit cautious as far as what we allow under the, say, first phase, and that as, you know, data is collected, more information comes forward, and it can be shown that that type of manufacturing is worthy of supporting, and it can be done in a safe way, it might be that the city reconsideres allowing that use at a future date. Also note that the ad hoc committee was recommending limited delivery services. There's an opportunity, for instance, for a delivery service to pick up a product at a licensed dispensary and transport it to someone living in Williston. The ad hoc committee felt that it was appropriate to limit that type of service at this point. I know our mayor probably has some thoughts on that, being our former police chief, but we are recommending that you allow delivery services between a licensed medical dispensary within the city limits and a medical patient within the city, so.
Just an editorial comment is that the ad hoc committee isn't actually recommending that the city consider those things. It's just recommending that any consideration of those things would be at a later time.
There you go.
Yeah, because saying that, it sort of sounds like we're recommending those, just not yet, but we haven't really looked at them yet.
Thank you. Yeah, that's accurate. I appreciate that. So then we started talking about, okay, now that we've got a list of the businesses that we're looking to support, you know, where should they be allowed to be at? And, you know, the consensus thought was that, you know, they're appropriate to be located in our industrial zone lands. That's where we typically have those types of activities that have an opportunity to create some type of nuisance or impact to the community, whether it's noise, odor, visual, et cetera. And typically, your industrial lands are reserved for those types of activities. So again, all those cannabis businesses that the ad hoc committee recommended be permitted be allowed in our industrial zone, which included limited industrial, heavy industrial, and our industrial park zone. And I'll point out that when I say permitted, I mean they would be allowed by rights, so it's a situation where provided they, a business met the standards as identified by the city, they would be allowed to operate a business at that location. And we'll talk a little bit more about permitting here in a second. Beyond that, the committee felt like there should be opportunities to allow for a dispensary or a testing lab within our commercial zoning districts, including community commercial or C1, and then our heavy commercial C2 zone, provided they obtain a use permit. So again, our industrial lands are typically tucked back a little bit further away from sensitive receptors. In general, the commercial zones are, tend to be clustered around residential development, and the thought was that there should be a little extra layer of protection or review for those uses being allowed in the commercial zone. Beyond the commercial zone and industrial zonings, cannabis businesses would not be allowed within the city. So again, with location, there's an opportunity to identify additional buffers between cannabis businesses and other types of sensitive land uses. The state does provide some guidance on this. They require that the medical facilities, you can read it there, I can't quite. Essentially, what it says is that a dispensary or a medical marijuana business that has a storefront or mobile retail outlet must be 600 feet from a school. A school is defined as K through 12, whether public or private. So that certainly would be a dispensary. Another example might be if you had a license for a nursery, but then you had a retail outlet where you could go and purchase plant starts at that nursery. That would be considered a storefront likely, and then it would be subject to the automatic state 600 foot buffer from schools.
But Dusty, to clarify, if you had a nursery, but it wasn't open to the general public, it could be within that 600?
Yes. So, thank you.
Are we going to be, we're going to go through the staff report later, correct? Or is this it?
I was hoping most of this was going to cover most of the information in the staff report, but if it doesn't, then we can.
Well, I just want to, you know, know the appropriate time to raise questions that I have. I don't know if this would be it or later.
I think what the plan was wrong, that I told Dusty that have him go through his slide, then we let him wrap up a little bit, and then we'll open it up to the council. If you have questions, I'll have him stay up here.
All right, good, because if we use the staff report as a guide, then that would be a good place to hit the points that I'd like to hit. Okay, so I'll let you go then.
Okay, all right, thanks. So another important note with the state buffer requirement or separation requirement from schools is that it's measured from property line to property line, and not from a building that houses the children to the building that houses the medical marijuana business. So this is a map that staff made, or had made, that identifies the schools as defined by the state, and then draws a 600-foot buffer around them. It shows all the industrial land, zone lands within the city. The gray, the industrial zone lands in gray are those within the 600-foot buffer, and the ones in green are those industrial lands that are outside. So for instance, if you were looking to start a dispensary, and let me just point out, this is approximate, you know, if there's a building and it's five, you know, property's 598 feet from there, you know, it might be showing incorrect on this map. But this is, gives you a pretty decent understanding of how many properties would be eligible to receive a permit for something like a dispensary recognizing the state requirement for the 600-foot buffer.
I'm trying to locate where all these things are on the map, and there's no street names there, so I hit some of them. But for example, in the lower right-hand corner, that's near the hospital, it's near the, East Hill Road goes through there, correct?
Yeah, so a little further back.
Talking about right here?
Yeah, that whole green area there, that's, that looks like it's around in the hospital area.
Yeah, that's the hospital area right there, yeah. I thought it was going to be fancy with the laser pointer here.
I remember that.
Yeah, so East Hill kind of divides it right there.
So.
So you have industrial park on the other side of the hospital there.
So that lower part, well, first of all, the hospital is zone industrial?
No, it's zone commercial, and I think that was a recent rezone that maybe didn't pop up in the data that we fed the county. So there, I think what you identified was an inaccuracy in the map.
So it's hard to tell from this one. I could see it from the other one. Right down there, that's, that's the housing development, isn't it? The Hale Creek Housing Development? I believe it is.
Yeah, down below the green is the Hale Creek Housing Development.
Yeah. We might have to talk about that.
And we're going to get to that a little bit here in a second. So again, did the same thing for commercial zonings, identifying the school locations, identifying the 600-foot buffer, and then identifying those properties that are zone commercial and are within the 600-foot buffer, and those properties that are zone commercial and outside the 600-foot buffer. So we, the ad hoc committee started to get into the.
Time out. I have my hand up for quite a while. That, those maps are absolutely the worst thing that I have ever seen. I have no idea where any of that is, and I've been here a really long time. And if you can tell me where one of the streets are in here, I'll put in with you, because I can't tell. I have to have something that says Highway 20, 101, Humboldt Street, whatever. And I know that you guys that have all done this understand this, but I'm not quite as bright as you people are, so I need a specific thing of where these things are. So when you get ready to do this again, would you please remember that?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And you are just as bright as us, in fact, I wish I had put a little bit more information on there to, so you had a kind of a reference point as you looked at this map. But let me spend just a second pointing out a couple of things for, well.
I think if you could point out that that's the high school.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do with my laser pointer here. Maybe if I just could look, I could spend a second to do that. But here's the high school property here.
It's a high school.
Here's the charter school.
The elementary charter school.
Yeah. Here's the charter school for the junior high kids, I believe.
Junior high.
This Blosser, Beckel.
Brookside, Brookside, and then Blosser.
Mm-hmm. So here's Highway 20, 101, kind of going through.
Well, is that the school there next to the gas station, the Christian School?
Oh, I don't think that counts as a.
I don't, I'm not aware of that school. No.
That's just a church school. It's not a.
But at a certain.
I must pay attention, Brookside, Blosser, Beckel.
But at a certain point, I assume we're going to get more specific when we identify parcels.
Thank you.
That we are going to permit or not permit? Or are we just using this map and the previous map?
The point of showing you this map was just to kind of give you an understanding of the level of properties that would be ineligible for a permit based on a buffer of that size.
Okay.
So I think it's important, you know, if we start creating buffers, you know, we end up with, well, there's only two properties now that are eligible. I think that becomes important for you guys as you're making decisions.
Well, but there's another factor in this thing, too, and even though I just said before that this may or may not be the proper time to go into it, this might be. The state law specifies 600 feet from schools, and that seems to be the only sensitive receptor that's listed.
By the state.
Right. But it seems to me that we need to add a whole bunch of stuff in addition to that. For example, I don't know that any of these facilities would be appropriate next to residential areas, or playgrounds, or churches, or, you know, I'm sure everybody up here can come up with a list of things that could be objectionable, so what I want to do is to reserve a place before this stuff gets locked in, where we can actually go through.
The next slide, he's going to talk a little bit.
Okay.
That was, yeah, that was just the perfect transition there, because as you started spouting that out there, listed it behind you on the power board.
And Dusty, can I just add a little editorial here? The purpose of this slide and the purpose of today's meeting is bring it back up here to the council. So as Dusty explains what some of these things are that we've discussed, then you'll have an opportunity to weigh in and give our ad hoc direction.
Okay.
Because we didn't want to say to Dusty and Jim, go forth and go copy or write your own ordinance for us, only to have us slaughter it up here at a later date, so the purpose is.
And here it is, right there.
Yeah, right? It seems, well. So we talked about the state's required one, and we couldn't differentiate from that. We could make it 1,000 feet. We could add other sensitive receptors, but we do need to acknowledge the state 600-foot buffer for certain types of medical marijuana businesses. So I provided the list of other potential sensitive receptors that the council may or may not want to establish buffers from, the list included, but it's not limited to residential land uses, churches, public parks, daycares, museum, library. What a lot of jurisdictions, they'll group all of that and call them youth-oriented facilities. And as, you know, if the council provides direction on what they like, you know, what they think is appropriate to establish a buffer for in various distances, we could come back with some other maps that showcase that idea. We can generate a list of properties by parcel numbers, so you have an understanding of the level of properties that are outside of the buffer or inside of that potential buffer. We'll put some landmarks on there, so they're a little bit easier to identify location. And just some options to be thinking about as we discuss this, you know, what should the distance be, separation? The intent of the buffers is to avoid adverse impacts of the sensitive receptors such as odor, noise, and visual impacts. You know, we're, you know, like, for instance, with the indoor cultivation, we're, you know, looking to adopt a standard that essentially says that, you know, you're not going to be able to smell or see it from outside of the building. So if we identify these standards and applicants are able to meet them, potentially, we've met the intent of the buffers, and maybe there's not a need for some of the buffers. That's something we've heard from the public. Other jurisdictions typically require buffers in a range of 250 feet to 1,000 feet. The cities usually have a more limited buffer than the counties, just because I think of the area available and how close they are to each other. We can vary it. You can say this, you know, indoor cultivation operation deserves 1,000-foot buffer, but a testing lab deserves no buffer, or a 200-foot buffer. Councilwoman Strong had the idea in our ad hoc meeting to maybe establish buffers, but then allow a business to encroach within that buffer, provided they can obtain a use permit. And, you know, through the use permit process, the council and staff may identify additional requirements to place on that business to meet the intent of the buffer. Maybe it's a visual concern, and it can be dealt with by building some type of wall or fence. Maybe it's, you know, some type of additional odor control or something, I'm not sure. But just ideas to be thinking about as you're putting this in. Do I have, did I label streets on this one? Yeah, there you go. Highway 20, 1.
One street. That's the only one.
Slightly better, not quite there yet, but anyways. So again, this map's showing the industrial lands, both within and outside of a 600-foot buffer, but this time, we included known daycares and public parks as well. And so, I wish my pointer was working, but you can see when you start adding additional sensitive receptors, it quickly starts eliminating eligible properties to get a cannabis permit. So for instance, with the park, a lot of those industrial lands to the northeast section of the city become ineligible for having a cannabis permit. And I think I got maybe one more here. And so then, as you go to 1,000 feet, let's say, instead of 600, again, you can see that it starts encroaching into more industrial parcels. So then, with a 1,000-foot buffer from sensitive uses such as schools, daycares, and public parks, you start losing out on a lot of that industrial land over by Robert Way, over by the tractor station.
Don't have much left.
Frankl Avenue, so. Then finally, what we're hoping to get some guidance from on the council tonight and the public is the permit process. So I kind of broke it into discretionary versus administrative permit process. Discretionary example would be a use permit, where they would submit the use permit to staff, we would process it, run it up against the zoning code, applicable standards, and then present it to the council, and the council would have the opportunity to deny it, approve it, put additional conditions and restrictions on the permit. By the way, I'm looking at issuing permits for a one-year period, consistent with how the state handles their permit process. Then we have the administrative permit process, where staff envision somebody coming in with an application. We would look to make sure it meets the standards that have been put in place, and provided it meets the standards. it meets the standards, we issue the permit. Doesn't require a public hearing, doesn't require a significant staff time to process. One of the, the potential cons of requiring discretionary permit for everything is that it puts a workload on staff to process each application. And quite honestly, if we get a, depending on the number of applications we get in, we're potentially looking at hiring additional staff in order to process those in a timely fashion. Again, that, that depends on the level of applications that we get.
One question. If some of the uses are allowed by permit, you know, just at the staff level, those are not appealable then? They are-
Yeah, I believe, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe an administrative decision by staff is appealable to the council, but your purview in overturning staff determination would be that we were, staff was erroneous in finding that the project was consistent with the standards. So it couldn't get appealed to the council simply because you didn't like it, and you'd have to say, "Boy, staff-"
Made a mistake.
"-made a mistake in determining that this was consistent with the standard." The council finds it's not consistent with the standard, therefore the project's denied. Or we do find that staff was correct in their determination and the project's upheld.
Is, is that your understanding?
Yes, it is. I'm, I'm sure that when we actually crafted an ordinance, we build it and appeal.
Thank you.
With the administrative process, the, one of the pros is that it's significantly less staff time to process an application. And one of the things I put in there, and it may be true, is if that we do set up a permit process that's quicker and provides a, a more certain guarantee that an applicant's going to obtain the permit if they can meet the standards, that could potentially attract more, more cannabis businesses and activities to the city. And then, I'll just quickly, next steps. So we're looking to receive guidance from the council tonight, and we went over, you know, we're looking for types of cannabis businesses to permit, where to permit them, should we have buffers, from what, what distance? Do you have thoughts on what the permit process should be? Again, really wanted to focus in on the discretionary versus the administrative approval process. You know, upon receiving direction tonight, we'll work with the cannabis ad hoc committee to complete a draft ordinance, and then we'll bring a public draft ordinance back to the council for review and direction. And provided council says, "Yeah, you guys are on the right track, fine tune this, fine tune that, in general, looks good," then we'll go ahead and, and start completing the environmental, or finish completing the environmental document that must go along with it. Again, the environmental document must ensure mitigation of potentially significant environmental impacts through the regulatory requirements and the permit standards. And then finally, we bring the, not only the environmental document, but the final draft ordinance back to the commission to potentially adopt. So that, that was my initial presentation to the council. I'm happy to answer any questions or go sit down.
So at this point, I guess I would open up to members of the council to ask questions, if Dusty or if the ad hoc, as we move through this, and then get your thoughts before I open it up to the public.
Yeah. Well, go ahead, somebody else, because I, I have a lot.
Larry, did you want to? Anything you want to add, Larry?
No, I just want to do it one at a time.
Okay. So, do you guys want to weigh in?
Ron's probably going to have a lot of the same questions.
Go ahead, Ron.
I might add on yours.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay, so basically what I did is, is I used your, your staff report and I highlighted certain things and just, just brought up some questions. Okay, let me-
I could throw a question out there.
Yeah, go ahead, good.
Okay. So, so we've mostly been talking about, well, we haven't really defined whether or not these facilities are going to be doing strictly medical or recreational, and what oversight will the city have to ensure that if we go with medical, that there'll be medical?
Yeah, good, good question. So the, the direction from the council, unless it changes, is we're, ad hoc committee's been solely focusing on medical and not recreational, so we've been working under MRSA.
And, and if I can add, the reason we went that route is that medical's on the table first.
Right.
And number two, the recreational just basically hit, and the state is still fine tuning what they want to do, or how they're going to do it, and we're waiting to see whether Washington weighs in on that. So we, we have the medical already on the table, and that's what we wanted to wrestle.
And that's what I thought, except I was a little concerned because I didn't hear anything in the presentation about how, how are we going to ensure that this is medical marijuana?
Yeah.
I wanted to add something too. I, I think what our approach has been at the ad hoc committee was that with the passage of Prop 64 and adult use, that the current ordinance in the city is that people can grow in their, in their own indoor home only if they have a medical permit. I think that will probably need to change in order to be, conform with state law, that people can grow up to six plants in their home for whatever use they want to have. So that would be, as far as we would go right now, would be just that personal grow for personal use would be okay. But we're talking, all of this is talking about commercial uses that go beyond just, you know, what you want to do in your own home.
Commercial medical marijuana.
Yes, so this, right now, we're only proposing commercial uses being for medical, and there would have to be a track-
I was going to say, how are we going to know?
Yeah, and, and this is also going to be, you know, we don't know for how long, but the state is trying to roll out track and trace requirements, and there are companies that can, that's what I'm looking for, can contract to do that, so that if you are a commercial, medical, marijuana grower, you have to trace where is your product going and where it goes there, they have to trace where it's going, so this doesn't turn into a, you know, a recreational growing, commercial business that we didn't, you know, we did not intend. So there has to be a tracking system.
But the state's not ready.
Well, right now, we're just, yeah, they're getting there, they're getting there. There are businesses.
Well, in fact, I think we need to look at recreational because it is moving forward. It becomes effective on January 1st of next year. So we're, we're talking about a little bit more than 10 months from now, it's going to be in place. Now whether or not they have all their ducks in a row, that's something else. We can still, I think we still, as you go through this, I think you need to be looking at the recreational, the whole aspect here to see, because there are some differences between the recreational law and the medical law. And I think we need to be aware of that and, and plan ahead so we don't get caught short. Whether or not the state has their stuff in order, we still need to protect ourselves. So I think that, that's, I'm just recommending that, that you-
And Ron, we, we had talked about that as part of that, we know it's out there, and it may be that we have a, for the sake of argument, let's say we say we want to move forward with a dispensary, and initially that dispensary may be licensed as a medical dispensary. With the idea that we're not kidding ourselves that, that medical dispensary may apply to us at a later date, that they want to go recreational, and then that would come back to us.
Well, all I'm saying is there are certain aspects of, of Prop 64 that could fit in very nicely with, with what you're looking at right now, but there could be other ones. So all I'm suggesting is, is take a look at it and see if there's anything in there that they could come back and bite us, that we're not aware of. That, that's all I'm saying on that.
The other part of that, though, is that local governments still have control over the recreational-
That, that's right. A, a local jurisdiction could, for instance, allow for medical but prohibit recreational. And, and I think as we craft an ordinance specified to, to medical cannabis, you know, you're acutely aware of what ALMA allows for, and it may be that, you know, should the city decide to open it up for recreational opportunities as well, there wouldn't be too much challenge in converting that ordinance to allow for recreational.
So you're, you're talking about commercial recreational?
Yeah.
Or just recreational?
This ordinance that we're trying to craft out is only about medical-
No, what you just said, the, the last sentence you just said, if you want to convert it to, to cover recreational-
Commercial recreational, yes.
Commercial. Because as, as a matter of fact, we do, we cannot prohibit indoor growing of six plants, even if we wanted to, under Prop 64. I mean, that, that's a given.
Yeah, for personal use, yeah. But if you, if you are growing and you're going to be a commercial operation, the city can have a higher standard.
Okay. All right, but on a practical basis, so I, I assume that there is no licensing requirement for someone who wants to grow six plants in their own homes-
Indoor.
-under Prop 64.
That's correct.
There's probably no licensing required, correct?
Correct.
So that means that Mr. Sherman back there would have no idea how many plants this particular guy is growing in his house, because he's not going to come and tell you what he's going to do. So it's theoretically possible that everybody, that, that a lot of people can start a commercial operation in their own home and will never know it. So all I'm saying is we need to recognize that possibility and, and see, we need to consider it and, and make sure that we don't get caught in that. It could happen.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so-
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Because I'm, I'm ready with my list now. Okay, and, and this is not necessarily in the order that you presented it, but it's in the order of the, the staff report. So this one section here, it's development of local regulations. It's on, I don't know, page?
Page two.
So, okay. And the, the paragraph begins, "A major driver of policy options being developed is environmental mitigation." Now, you know, I, I wrote a report a little while ago that, that brought that up, and the, the ordinance that you guys, you know, you're proposing would limit all cultivation to indoor growing, and for, for obvious reasons. But there's a, a downside to indoor growing, obviously, it, it requires indoor lights, a lot of electricity. That is definitely environmental impact. And I had suggested in the past, and this was suggested during our, our public meetings, that, that the previous group had, it's not a committee, it's a group.
Yeah, a committee, yeah.
Yeah. One of, one of the suggestions that, that one of the participants made is that in order to mitigate the environmental impact of the increased use of electricity, we should consider imposing a, let's call it a carbon tax on the operators, and this tax would pay for a solar array that we could build on city property that would offset the impact of the electrical usage. Now, and, and in fact, under SEQA, it does require that, that jurisdictions take steps to mitigate or eliminate these impacts. Now, we may or may not be subject to SEQA, but I, I think we have a moral obligation not to promote businesses that are going to use a lot of fossil fuel, or whatever fuel makes electricity. So I, I think it would be important for you to consider this tax slash solar panel, you know, the whole offset program. I, I think that's an important part of this thing, because if we don't do that, then I think we're failing our, our citizens and the world. Okay. All right, let me see.
As a-
Jump in while I'm looking for it.
Can I just say, as a process thing, on something that requires the ad hoc committee to kind of go beyond where we already are now, do we want to discuss an item like that first, or just throw them all on the table and then discuss them?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm here to throw it on the table, and I think if anybody wants to discuss it-
Because there are a lot of-
Yeah, of course.
Specific things.
But I think this is the op, this is the opportunity to get these things on your table.
Yeah, I mean, the, the main point, I mean, we're still at a real high level right now.
Sure.
And so, you know, like for instance, what I heard is, yes, support indoor growing. But, you know, what we haven't gotten into a full discussion on at the committee level is what type of standards needs to go with each of those types of businesses. So for instance, tonight, we hear that, you know, the, the majority of the councils in support of the recommendations of the ad hoc committee, then the ad hoc committee's going to go and focus in on each of these uses-
Yeah.
...and identify standards, and then, and bring them back. And it might very well be that you have some type of standard that addresses energy.
It could be. And, but this is my opportunity to put my two cents in, so that's why I think it's important to take that. Okay, so this whole concept of the permitting in, in the, the various industrial and commercial areas, and, and this is something that we had talked about before, and I, and I support that. But I, I've spoken to some, to many people in the community ever since this whole thing first started being discussed, and these, some people who actually own industrial properties in the town. And the question they're asking me is, "So how can you say that this guy who owns that piece of property can, can have a marijuana operation, but I can't because I'm located over here?" You laid it out, you know, with, with the, with the circles and everything, but I want to make sure that we're on solid ground when we say, definitely, these are the properties, and that's essentially what we're going to be saying, these parcels cannot participate in the marijuana industry, period. And they'll take us to court, I assume.
Well, well, we shouldn't, we shouldn't make buffers and zoning decisions on an arbitrary basis, but if we have a legitimate, rational basis for deciding what kind of buffers we want, we want a certain distance from, from sensitive receptors like, like youth activities and churches and so forth. That's, that, I think is legitimate. And, and the state law recognizes that the local jurisdiction may add more stringent requirements than the state law requires, or may outright ban these kind of activities entirely. So there's a lot, there'll be a lot of deference given to the city council to establish appropriate regulations and, and buffers and zoning decisions.
Okay, so that, that is a clear, I, I mean, I thought it was, I just wanted to, you know, make sure.
You know, and it may be, Ron, that we set up these sensitive receptors, and then as these commercial enterprises, I guess, establish a history, and that, then they may be petitioned down the road and come back and say, "Look, 250 feet or 800 feet is too much, and we have no signs, you can't tell what we are, there's no smell, there's no..."
Well, well-
They may come back to us.
And that is true. And, and again, you know, we're, this is new territory for all of us. And again, this has been said to me as well. If we make these operations such that when you stand outside, you can't tell what's going on inside, what difference does it make if it's next door, it's somebody's house or a school or whatever? And in, in theory, you could say, "Well, okay, that, that makes sense." But, so I think it's bringing in another factor that's, and, and I don't know how I could, I'm not sure what term I could use to address it, but it's like, I don't want that near me. I don't want that near my kid's schools, you know, just because even though my kid can stand there right up to the front door and not have any clue what's going on inside that door, this evil is still lurking inside there. I don't want my kid exposed to that. So there is that argument that will be presented. And I, I think it's a, I think it's a philosophical discussion that I think we all need to search our, our minds and, you know, and try to understand what are we, you know, what are we doing? Because the other side of it is that it's interesting how this whole marijuana issue has developed over the years. And, and I've been very sensitive to the whole thing. I've been watching it almost from day one. And for a long time, people were reluctant and maybe afraid to even speak out against marijuana. They were afraid of whatever. And then probably about the time that the city wrote the first ordinance, probably about 2004, '05, '06, something like that, people started coming out of the woodwork. And low and behold, we found there were a lot of people who were really dead-set against marijuana. And in the ensuing years, we had a couple of, of elections in, in this county. And one legalized or decriminalized marijuana in Mendocino County, that was in 2000, and it was- marijuana in Mendocino County, that was in 2000, and it was passed by, I think, something like 58 percent. Then in 2008, there was another measure that rescinded that, and that passed by like 52 percent. So, and as we go down the list, even if you look at all the ballot measures that were voted on this past November, we find that some were for, some were against, and some passed, some didn't. So what that tells me at least is that the people in this county are pretty evenly divided. But we don't hear from the people who were dead set against it. I mean, I speak to them, you know, on the street, and I'm sure a lot of us do. And they complain to us, you know, this is wrong, but what are you going to do, they say. And I'm pretty sure, I'm going to make a wild guess, is there anybody in the audience tonight who is against marijuana? Thank you, my wife. So the point is, is that the people who come out to these meetings, and I'm not faulting anybody, the people who come out to the meeting are supporting, you know, the whole marijuana industry. And I sat in two public meetings, and this room was full of people who were in the industry. And I got to tell you, it was a great experience. You know, they were intelligent, they were focused. We had some good discussions. So I'm not saying good or bad, one or the other, but we do not, the fact is, we do not hear from the people who have a problem with marijuana. So we get the impression that everybody's for it. So all I'm saying is that we need to keep in mind that about half of the people in this city don't want marijuana.
Ron, I think Larry wants to ask specifically.
Well, can I finish my sentence? Can I?
Oh, no. I think they wanted to ask your question.
Oh.
Well, I wanted to comment on that.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's all I'm saying is, we need to be cautious that we don't want to get caught up in the support, you know, blind support without, and we cannot forget these people, 50 percent of the population, who really does not feel comfortable with this. So whenever you come up with any ordinances or restrictions or regulations, it's real important to keep that in mind. We have a whole big part of the population that needs to be taken care of.
Matt, you're good.
So, my, first of all, I think that this approach that the ad hoc committee has come up with is very much taking that into account. And it's not, you know, we're not talking 100 percent for or, you know, 100 percent against. We're talking about a very measured, logical way to approach moving forward in a, you know, stepwise. And I think in doing that, we also have to be very even-handed with our regulations. For example, if we allow churches and a mosque wants to come in, to me, that's, you know, subject to the same regulations. Some people may be against it because they're Muslims. That is not allowed under our constitution. We do not pass laws that are discriminatory on that basis. And I don't think that this regulation that we're proposing now should be discriminatory on, well, I'm a neighbor and I hate marijuana, but, well, I'm a neighbor and I really like it. So I, you know, it shouldn't be based on popularity. It should be based on standards that make sense for the whole community. And in doing that, that may involve buffers between some residential areas, but those buffers should be reasonable, not just, you know, I don't, I don't want it anywhere in the city. If we, as the city council, and with a lot of input from the public, feel that this is appropriate to move ahead, and we do it in a reasonable, logical, justifiable steps that we're, I think these are, that is exactly what the ad hoc committee is proposing, and I hope the city council will look at it that way. It's not just, you know, I'm for it or I'm against it. It's like, what's reasonable?
Larry.
The reason that you don't hear it is you don't have regular hours downtown. If you were downtown from 10 till 5 o'clock, whatever days, every day, you would hear, and I would take, I would say, if I had to make a count, and this is just a rough count, I would say that the community is pretty well split 50-50.
That's what I feel.
That's informal, but I, you know, somebody pounding on my desk at 10 o'clock and another one at 4 o'clock on opposite sides. I'm just saying that this is a really volatile thing in our community, and I think that it's going to take some real time to do it correctly. And that's what we're up here to do.
I agree. I mean, you're right. I have not, I don't have the exposure like that you do, but based on, you know, my research, I have come to the same conclusion that we're about 50-50 split. And all I'm saying is that because, you know, typically, when you have a council meeting, the room gets filled up with, you know, a lot of people on one side if they feel very strongly about that. And it's very easy to get the wrong impression that this is what the community wants because you're only seeing the one side. So all I'm just cautioning that we be careful and be mindful of that. The next item that I was looking at is the statement just above nurseries, the last paragraph.
Hold on one second, Ron.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was trying to get mayor's attention. Sitting in on the ad hoc committee meetings, the thing that's really paramount in all of this is focusing, or for the council to make a decision on what we're focusing on here. And it was the ad hoc committee and staff's perspective that we really need to make that distinction between the medical cannabis and the recreational. Even though recreational has been approved by state voters, it's about really taking that measured approach and finding an avenue that is not going to be offensive to the people that don't want it next door to them, that are, you know, strongly opposed to it, but finding a path forward to allow for the medical, the legitimate medical cannabis industry. And so I think that that's what this, you know, what staff and the ad hoc committee have tried to endeavor.
No, I'm saying, I'm not finding fault in the process or anything like that. But basically, as I said, this is my opportunity to put my two cents in. And I just want to make sure that everything's covered. And I see you nodding yes to every time I say something, which tells me that you've already have it on your radar. But I just, you know, we, I just.
Or that I'm paying attention to this thing, too.
Yeah, no, okay, that's.
But, yeah, no, a lot of the stuff you mentioned is, we've had at least brief discussions on the ad hoc.
Exactly. So, but again, if I don't say these words, and something comes on down the path, and I feel I should have said something that, you know, that would fail in my duty. So I have to say what I have to say, you know, that's all. It's not criticism or anything. Okay.
Sabina, did you want to?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I agree that the community is split 50-50. And there's two things that have been said so far this evening that have really bothered me. And I think the first thing is that we're talking about ordinances for medical marijuana, but then there was a comment about the fact that it's a natural, it's naturally going to happen that once we, for example, we have three dispensaries, if we approve that, that are going to be medical marijuana, but it's only going to be a natural progression that eventually those would be open up.
No, I guess what I, let me clarify what it says.
Please do.
Is that I can see where the inclination would be that with the recreational, that somebody who already has a license would want to do that.
And that's going to be.
But it's going to come back to us to decide whether we want to allow that. In the end, we may decide as a council that we want to allow medical marijuana businesses, but not recreational marijuana businesses. And part of that, I guess, to kind of summarize what everybody else said, yeah, it's our job to kind of filter through with those sensitive receptors and take into account both the pro and the anti and find that middle ground.
And then, no offense to you, Matt, but I was offended by the comparison that you made of, for example, Christian churches versus Muslim, when I didn't feel like that was at all a fair comparison of marijuana versus no marijuana. They're, they're very, very, very different.
Of course.
There's the term of comparing apples and oranges, and that certainly is comparing apples. Apples and oranges.
I just meant ordinance. Sorry, can I clarify? That I just meant an ordinance should be written in a way that that can be applied equally.
And that, I thought, was the spirit of your argument.
I'm sorry.
So I get that, but, yeah.
Okay. We talk about the, you asked a question in the staff report, that you're considering whether to recommend a cap on the number of permits issued. Now, you're saying here for indoor cultivation businesses, but I would assume that applies to any of the businesses that are listed.
It could. I think at this point, with deliberation with the ad hoc committee, we've come up with a recommendation that we, at least initially, only was to allow for three dispensary permits. And then we also had a discussion about potentially limiting the largest indoor grow operations. We've heard from the public in past discussions and meetings that there's a concern that maybe locals that didn't have the resources from others out of the area may not, may have a harder time participating in the permit process and the cannabis business industry in Willets. And so the thought was maybe, maybe you cap the largest size grows and allow for more smaller type operations. But the council has the ability to cap.
Yeah.
Any of the permits for any of the types of activities that we've been discussing.
Okay. From my personal perspective, I think there should be a cap on large and small. And one of the things I keep thinking of is the ABC rules. I may be wrong, but I understand that, I think, there is some sort of a cap on the number of bars that can be permitted in any area. And I believe that's all tied into population. And in fact, I believe, I saw somewhere in the Prop 64 notes that I was reviewing the other day, that there is a tie-in to the population and the number of facilities that can be approved in any jurisdiction. So three might be appropriate, maybe two might be, I don't know. And, but that's only for dispensaries. But when you're talking about the other operations, I think we need to, you know, research that and see if there, first of all, is a standard, you know, based on, I'm guessing, like I say, the ABC regulations, or if we want to set our own standard. But for myself, I think we definitely need a cap. We don't want to have every storefront in town selling marijuana or dealing with it or anything like that. So that, again, that's my two cents. Okay, I agree with you with a non-volatile solvents. From what I know about it, it's probably something, you know, we don't need to go with the voluble, volatile, sorry, volatile. Okay, health-related requirements, yeah, that sounds good. And, you know, you are looking for input from us.
Ron, where are you?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Dispensaries?
Yeah, I'm down to dispensary right now. And I'm just scanning through here, just this paragraphs that I highlighted. Up to three dispensaries operate, so we covered that. Okay, the scoring, and this committee is exploring, this is down at the top of page, they're not numbered.
Six, up to the side of.
Ron, page three, I believe.
Okay.
For dispensary.
It's, well, it's after, yes, in the dispensary section, but it's on the next page.
So page four, top of page four.
Okay, thank you. The committee is exploring different scoring, ranking systems that would allow council to determine which dispensary permit application would best meet criteria, such location, availability, et cetera. That's a great idea. And defining that is going to be a job. I wish you luck. Do you have any ideas about how you want to go about that?
Well, Berkeley was one.
Yeah, there's a couple jurisdictions, and honestly, talking to them, they've told me if they had to do it over again, they would change a few things, at least the staff level would. You know, if you're going to create a cap on number of permits, then it becomes relevant to discuss, well, how do you choose which permits to issue if we receive more applications than the number of permits to issue? So if the dispensaries talk about limiting at three, well, let's say we open up the windows for applications for a two month period or something, and we get 10 applications in there, how do we pick the three out of the 10 fairly? You know, there was ideas of like the first come, first served, but that becomes difficult because you're going to have different levels of sophisticated applications, and some might have got in the door first, but all it had was their name on it and an address, you know, or something. We talked about the lottery system, where, you know, hey, good luck, everybody. But ultimately, we thought that some type of scoring, ranking system would be the most appropriate, fair way to find what the cream of the crop is among that application pool. And, you know, you mentioned location, you know, your business plan, your ability to provide professional medical services along with the business. I mean, I'm just throwing out ideas here.
Yeah, sure.
Of what we might be used to rank applications. And then ultimately, you know, we would come up with that ranking criteria, everyone would be aware of the rules, everyone would be aware of what in the window to put an application in, submit an application is. And ultimately, the council would be in charge of ranking each application, and then, you know, through a public forum or public meeting, identifying those that rose to the top.
Okay, but you are aware that ranking is a qualitative function. And so if it's ranking from one to 10, how do you decide if they get a seven, an eight, or a five? I mean, that's arbitrary, and it can be challenged. And I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think you need to be mindful of that. It can be challenged. If, you know, you gave me a five for this thing, I'm worth a seven. And they could argue about that, so.
And, you know, no matter who we choose, there's going to be those folks that feel like, man, my application is better than the other person's. I don't know how to quite avoid that situation.
Well, but it's something we're going to have to deal with.
But it's common. I mean, in personnel decisions, you might have 10 applicants applying for one job, and there's some ranking that goes forward in that. And I, we have some good examples, the city of Berkeley, and there are some others out there that have some pretty sophisticated criteria for ranking these businesses and narrowing it down from a large pool to a small pool, and then having the council consider like the top three applicants.
But I think the thing we need to keep in mind is, you know, using your example of a job application, you know, somebody may make question whether or not they got hired because their ranking was arbitrarily made lower than someone else's. But here, we're talking about the difference, in your case, of maybe a $60,000 or $100,000 a year job versus a million dollar a year business, potentially. There's a little more at stake, and there probably could be a heck of a lot more pushback if someone feels that you're not treating, that you're not ranking them fairly.
Would you think a better process would?
No, I have no, I have no idea. I'm just throwing this out there. And maybe, you know, the Berkeley example that you said is foolproof. I mean, you know, if it is. But that's what we need to come up with. We need to come up with some sort of an ironclad thing that, you know, even though it's going to be arbitrary, it's not.
We're not going to come up with something that's foolproof.
Yeah. So, Matt, you wanted to ask something?
Yeah, I agree. Nothing is going to be 100 percent foolproof or non-litigable because, you know, somebody wants to, but I think standards can be written that are reasonable, that the staff can interpret. And then, but I think if you have that level of review and you have a cap on the number, then it almost makes those decisions also have to come to city council. Maybe not, but it sort of makes it more discretionary. And so I would also.
I'd rather not be involved with that personally.
I would also then prefer that we not make all permits under this ordinance, or this proposed ordinance discretionary, because then I think we're really just, you know, making a tremendous amount of workload. And I think the number of permits that come to the city is somewhat determined by the market, and it is with all the other businesses. You know, you have restaurants open, and there's not enough people dining out, and so some of them don't make it, you know? That we can't be the market force. You know, we should, you know, we should have land use regulations that make sense, standards that make sense. But if they meet those, and then there's too many growers and they can't all compete, that's their problem.
Well, actually, I disagree with that because, and I understand what you're saying when you're talking about conventional businesses, you know, there might be 100 restaurants that open up in this town, and only three of them will survive, and that's their loss. But I think it's very clear that when we talk about marijuana, we're not talking about conventional businesses. This is a very unusual industry. And it's recognized that it's unusual. I'll give you one example. And we haven't gotten to this part yet about fees and taxes and things like that. And, you know, it could be argued that marijuana is a business. And, you know, it could be argued that marijuana is a business. We already have sales taxes in place in the state that are set for every business that operates. So why should marijuana be treated differently? But it is. There is a higher tax rate by state law on marijuana than on anything else in the state, correct? I mean, there might be some other commodity that's what.
In fact, medical marijuana is not taxable.
What, sales tax?
So there's excise tax if they're planning, 15% excise tax.
Okay. Okay, so I misspoke when I said.
But no.
Okay, but the point is, is that there is a special tax rate, whether it's excise or sales, there's a special tax rate for marijuana that does not apply to anything else that is manufactured or sold in the state, correct or not?
Well, gasoline has an excise tax.
Okay, okay. But so, I mean, you can look at the millions of things that are sold in the state, and there's maybe a handful that have a special, that are treated especially. I'm trying to make that point.
Yeah.
I mean, and given that, and I forgot what the original point was, but given that, yeah, okay.
It's an exceptional kind of business.
The number, the number of places that can be operated. It is an unusual thing, and I think it's extraordinary, and we need to treat it as such. Anyway.
Right. Can I continue?
Oh, yeah, yeah. This track and trace system, I think that's good, they do exist. In fact, I think I sent you some information from Arcata. So that is something that, it's there. Okay, the additional buffers we touched base on, I think there should be, not just schools. The other thing that, you brought up the point there about, and I forget whether it was allowable or, is he permitted, or?
Discretionary.
Discretionary. And either one of them would generate more or less work for staff.
Yeah, the administrative permit process would be expected to require a lot less significant staff time to process than, say, a discretionary permit like a youth permit.
Okay, and you put that up there as something that the council should decide and discuss. Personally, with apologies to the city manager and staff, I don't care how much time it takes for staff to do what they have to do. I think it's more important that we control it, that we regulate it, and we look at the issue itself, not about staff time. Now, having said that, part of the process is going to be that the revenue, the extra revenue is going to come in from these operations, is going to handle extra staff time. We will have to hire more people, there's no question about it. We're going to have to hire, you know, more code enforcers, we're going to have to hire maybe more, more police, whatever it is. And the money that is raised by marijuana operations, by law, has to be used for enforcement, mitigation, education, treatment, stuff like that. We cannot use that money to pave streets. I hope everybody's aware of that. I mean, that's in the state law. So the money's going to be here for those purposes, so I wouldn't be afraid of making extra work for staff. In fact, we're going to create jobs, make America great again. I think I'm almost done here, but, okay, yeah, I think that's pretty much what I had.
Suprema, you said you had something?
I'm a law professor.
Okay.
No, I think we listened to what they have to say.
All right, I'm going to open it up to the public. Folks, would you like to come up? Start lighting up over there.
Yes, my name is Barbara Plaza. I'm concerned about banning, you know, if you're going to get a 22,000 square foot, are you going to ban each one of those marijuana plants? And what about the, we can't apply for a job if we're not drug tested. So are these people all going to have drug tests? And another thing is, if you've got dispensaries already in our town, Willets, that are secretly operating and giving their cards out in another county to come here secretly, they should be disqualified. So you are not aware, we already have dispensaries in our own town, and they should be disqualified if you want to try and give them a dispensary permit. And another thing is that they should be drug tested, just like any other job.
If you could state your name.
Hi, my name's Mona Brombot. I have a background in sustainability and renewable energy, and I noticed that the proposed ordinance is going to limit this kind of cultivation activity to industrial zones, and then on top of that, there will be an overlay of buffers, right? So my question is for the staff and the council to consider the possibility of including greenhouse or mixed light situations. I, I'm concerned certainly about the environment, and I think that indoor growing is unnecessarily resource intensive, when clearly there's a sunlight that's out during the summertime. So, you know, certainly there could be concerns around smell and other odors and things. However, if we're already limiting things to an area that's industrial, there's going to be buffers and overlays to make sure that that's not going to be a nuisance to people that are nearby. Perhaps the general public, or the permit could be for indoor only, but there may be exception possibilities. Industrial zoning, if it's got a certain number of, you know, extra feet, or whatever it might be, it's not near residential, then mixed light or greenhouse could be considered because that could be seen as a pretty cost-effective way to mitigate some of the environmental concerns that I know the committee is concerned about. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Edie Lerman. I'm an attorney. I practice here locally, while I have an office in Yukaya. I used to practice here in Willets before our courthouse shut down. But I'd just like to offer anyone who is interested in opinion from both a criminal defense perspective and a regulatory perspective from an attorney. I've spoken with Lori A. Jackson, the bureau, and have been talking with them as they're developing their regulations. And I've also worked with different city councils, NAPA, Oakland, Berkeley, just to name a few, in setting their regulations up. My email address is edie@lawyer.com, and I'm also sending you guys a letter. I'd really like to acknowledge the legitimacy of the concept of allowing for multiple permits on one property. It's very difficult to have a cannabis business and find a landlord who has the ability and is open-minded to allowing a business to happen there. And while I hear and understand the need for the regulations to be subcategorized, obviously, in accordance with what Mercer requires, we are allowed to have multiple permits on one parcel. And so we can meet both the advantages of getting the tax benefits for the city, as well as really allowing more uses to happen. So rather than having limits to large-scale cultivations, you can allow for multiple licenses to happen on that location. So I just want to make sure that you're considering that, and considering how difficult it is to find a landlord that's open-minded to allow for large-scale cultivation to happen, particularly with the banking issues that are involved in this industry. And I also have a lot of contacts in the industry with respect to seeing locations that are licensed. So if there's any interest, I'd be more than happy to try and set that up for the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lee Jensen. I hadn't planned any remarks here, but I did just catch something. I'm a PhD level biochemist, and my interest is in medical properties of marijuana. And part of what I want to do is to be able to separate out the various cannabinoids for potential different, potentially different medical benefits. And if you limit us to not using volatile solvents, you'll pretty much kill that. I would like to tell you that there's a big difference between gaseous volatiles, you know, butane and propane, and what we would use in the pharmaceutical industry would be things like hexane, which is pretty much like, you know, as dangerous as a gallon of gasoline or something. You know, with proper training, it's really very manageable. So not only for extraction, but for the post-extraction process, where you're going to try to separate these through chromatography or something else, you pretty much need to have volatile solvents to do that. And I'd also say that in a testing facility, you're going to have these volatile solvents there, because you can't do the testing without volatile solvents anyway. So you're kind of setting up a different standard there. So I would encourage you to at least allow us to use liquid solvents. You know, I personally don't like butane, but, so I don't care if you don't allow that. But you would really hamper us from doing, you know, proper extension of medical research and extraction of individual cannabinoids if you disallow that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Adams. I want to thank you for taking up this issue. It's complicated. Thanks to the community for offering their perspective and their points. There's a lot to learn. I'm sure in this process, we'll all learn a lot more. I have a few points, concerns, to reiterate what Madge and Ronbo said. I mean, remembering the current state law now is that everybody in the town of Willets can grow cannabis. Doesn't matter if you're right next to the school. You can't do it commercially, you have to do it inside a secure building, but we all have that right right now. That's now our, so remembering that. With these setbacks and nuisance things, I've kind of been making observations recently. I went into Rite Aid, alcohol, and toys 18 feet apart. There's 43 places in this town where one can buy alcohol. There's only six that children aren't allowed into. So children can get really close to these things. Let's see, tobacco is very similar. You can buy tobacco in a store that children can go and do. Every store in Willets that you can buy tobacco, children are allowed into. Whereas with cannabis businesses, my thinking is that you would have to be at least 21 in order to even enter a facility that sold cannabis. That's my understanding. You know, nuisance issues, very close to here, in that direction, there was a bar, a liquor store, and a school, all in the same building, burned down. So on the environment.
Just to point out, the school came in to where the bar was, not the opposite.
The bar was there first.
Right, but obviously, there was no restriction on school and bar and.
You can't chase on.
There would have been a restriction.
So I'm just remembering that sad day in our town. You know, and as for the carbon tax idea, I mean, I certainly, I'm not a proponent of indoor cannabis cultivation. I resonate with the opinion that was spoken earlier. And if we are going to be growing cannabis in this town or anywhere, I believe it should be outdoor. That's certainly the best way a plant should be grown, and the least environmentally harmful. And as a side note on the banking issue, I've been through a few banks recently, and there's no bank in Willets or in Yukaya that will currently allow a cannabis business to open an account. I find that to be a disturbing thing. I don't, that's one that can be addressed by city council, that we're going to have to eventually do something at that, the state or federal level. And my last point, the ranking or the lottery system, I mean, we could just say that there's not a limit on the number of permits, and if you meet the qualifications, then you get a permit, as another possibility that I didn't hear discussed. I really appreciate you listening, and I thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Colby Friend. I'm an attorney, I'm a local business owner. I want to piggyback on what Mr. Adams said, that we should not have any limits to the amount of permits allowed in this city. First of all, you're going to limit the revenue that the city can take in. You're going to make it unfair to the people who are not allowed to, and, you know, you're only going to basically be allowing permits to the very wealthy, or whoever can somehow, you know, make themselves more appealing. And usually, that's going to be by wealth, you know, putting more into it, bigger facilities. We don't need to have a limit. And the biggest thing is, it's going to kill competition. And competition is what is supposed to be the impetus for capitalism, which is, you know, putting the people against, the businesses against each other so that they improve. They have to be better than the one next door, right? So now you just have three, and they're just locked in there, doesn't matter, they kick back, are they going to, are they going to do a good job? You know, so allow people to compete, and for people's business. I just want to suggest to you, I doubt you'll take me up on it, but if you do, I think you'll very much enjoy it, that all five of you council members, together or separately, probably separately, take your wives, husbands, whatever, go to Amsterdam, okay? It's a beautiful city. They've been doing this for 30 years. They know what they're doing. Take a look at what it really looks like. Take a look at what a coffee shop looks like. And is it dirty? Is it, is it, is it a problem? Is it a problem for kids? Not at all, it's beautiful. Better architecture, the better transportation. You get off the airport in Amsterdam, all the taxis are Teslas, okay? You talked about Councilman Ron, you talked about, you know, helping the world with solar power and so forth. I mean, the Dutch are doing it over there, and they've been, they're just ahead of everybody right now. And they've been doing this legalized marijuana in their city for 30 years now. So go and take a look at it, see what it looks like. And I think you'll come out with a good idea, maybe a good plan. This will never be another answer, yeah? But it could be a haven for this type of business. And I have no problem with more of these businesses. I agree with Mr. Adams, it's like, maybe like a wine shop, you know, except for wine is a lot more probably destructive to society than marijuana is.
Okay. I like that idea. Do we have a travel budget?
Up to you guys.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for taking this issue up, and the Ad hoc committee's, I think, done some really good work, it sounds like, addressed a lot of the issues that I have been talking about since I've been up here a couple different times. I think we want to keep focused that, at least the work that's being done right now is talking about medicinal marijuana. And it's a legal, it's a legal product. I mean, these are products that have been produced that would go on a shelf somewhere in the store and be sold as medicinal products. You know, we don't, I think, addressing the whole thing about limiting the number, we don't limit the number of Rite Aids or Rexalls or, you know, to sell medicinal products. These, this one is for animals. It could be sold in a veterinary, in a vet's store, or in, you know, any of the mercantile stores in town. It could just be on their little shelf with all the vet products. This is a SAB, it could be in any of the stores. I don't know that we'd start dictating what stores can sell what kind of bread or milk, how many carrots you can sell. I think it's been addressed that the marketplace pretty well takes care of. How many, there's a certain limited number of properties, if you go by what the recommendation is as far as zoning and the buffers, and not all of those property owners are going to be interested in doing this, so that's going to be a further limit on how many people can do it. And then the marketplace will dictate how many businesses. And if we keep in sight that these are supposed to be legitimate businesses now, we're not talking about some undercover economy that has been going on for years. This is a medicinal product, it's being produced legally, and I don't think we should treat it as some kind of criminal or suspicious element. Which leads me to the other point I'd like to make about greenhouses. I think you should still remain open to greenhouses. I think you should have criteria for greenhouses. I mean, you can have a piece of plastic stretched over PVC pipe greenhouse, but some of the commercial greenhouses are very, are very secure. commercial greenhouses are very, are very secure, they're very energy efficient, and I don't think you should rule out greenhouses at this point in time. So I'd like to just, I hope it's okay to give these to you, so you can just take a look at them. Here's some brochures here that explain this company's approach to how they're produced. They're, you know, organic, high quality are some things that I think you should look at. And here are some brochures that are, that have a lot of information about, some of this has already been gone through, but I think you'll find these information useful. Again, you as the city council have the police power. I mean, this is explained, you can, you can make the rules fit how you want them to fit. And if you look around, and I'm sure that there's been a lot of input given here, and your ad hoc committee has listened to a lot of their ideas, but there's, people all over are learning how to deal with this. And if we, if we just take advantage of some of the ideas that have come out, I heard an example of Berkeley, how they've developed criteria. I think if you start developing criteria for, you know, for what kind of buildings you allow, excuse me, what kind of buffers, that sort of thing, and then...
Allow staff, your city planner, that's what's called the zoning permit on the books right now that he can issue. It can be appealed to the city council. There's another option that the county does, which is to have an administering permit that is reported to the council, and any council member can bring it up to the council if they wish to. It's, it's in the coastal zone, I think is aware of that kind of a process going on.
The zoning administrator, the zoning, sorry, the city planner issues a zoning permit, then reports that to the city council, that he issued this permit based on these criteria, that anyone on the council can bring it up to the council if they wish to discuss it. Anyway, I'm way over my time, and I appreciate the opportunity to stop, and I hope that council continues to work on this and provide for legitimate business opportunities here in the city of Willets.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Alex Duran, and I am a resident of Mendocino County and technically Willets. I wanted to bring up a point of annexing properties for, for the purpose of permits. I do know someone who, who has a building, an industrial building that's in rural Mendocino County that would be interested. And with the limited amount of use, with the limited amount of buildings in, in the city of Willets, I think that it could benefit the city. What I'm, what I really wanted to discuss is, is being... So, so I've been here for six years, going on seven years. I recently ended up in a meeting with one of the co-founders of Realtor.com, somebody you can find on Forbes website, who's raised 1.5 billion. Pretty much, when it comes to applications, they can tell you whatever you want here, and, and they can afford to build buildings, they can afford to do whatever they want. They're also going to pay people fifteen dollars an hour or, or as little as possible. I think having local, I think that the distribution license is one of the most vital keys, not only for the city of Willets, but for Mendocino County. I believe Willets is key because it is, before Yukaya, there is, there are so many cultivators between here and Humboldt that, and that, that the right distributor can reach. And that, building the brand for Mendocino County, to me, is the issue. The stores, local stores definitely have to work out permits, you know, it's, of course, it's particular to the community. What Mendocino can provide is product statewide to twenty-two million people. I, I think that considering how to promote locals to, to have distribution, to have permits, to provide jobs that I know that I would pay fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, for people, and that's job creation for this city, and that's really what I'm interested in. Thank you for your time.
Alex, I have a question for you. On some of these folks that you talk about, are there any that already have their distribution licenses?
Elsewhere?
Yeah, elsewhere?
That, that want to move to Willets?
Or how they're, I guess I'm curious, how their license and how they're interacting with other jurisdictions. Do you know of those folks?
A little bit, actually. There is a company called Not, Not Rainbow. I'm a little bit nervous.
Tell you what, what I want to ask you, dear, is could you, Dusty is kind of our conduit. If you could pass that information to him. We're, we're doing our research, and obviously, if the direction of the council today is to continue to forward, then we want to make sure that we cover all the bases.
Absolutely. Definitely know legal distributors that, that I can refer for to him.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Del Potter. I've been a cultivator in Mendocino County since 2010. I wanted to ask, in your discussion on solvents, volatile and non-volatile solvents, were you considering ethanol a volatile or a non-volatile solvent? And I would advocate that ethanol is a non-volatile solvent and presents a safe extraction method. Would also suggest that you revisit the idea of hydrocarbon extraction and volatile extraction. When it's performed in a, with certified equipment, in a class-one, division-one lab, where there's no chance of combustion or spark, that it's completely safe. And I think that it's used throughout the chemical industry and throughout the food industry, and is a common method that there are definite safety protocols available for. I'd also, on another point, suggest that, you know, we hear a lot about taxation on marijuana, excise tax, offsetting the carbon footprint. I would suggest that you not overburden the, this new industry with too much taxation. And I would suggest that if the wine industry had to use a carbon offset when it was first developing, that we probably wouldn't see a wine industry. What, I haven't heard a lot of discussion about the benefits that a cannabis would provide to the local economy, and, you know, how the local economy could make use of, how, how that development of a new economy might, might help in general. I would suggest that marijuana is not, or cannabis is not an extraordinary industry, and I believe that that narrative is one that kind of creates a false sense of its, its impacts. I wanted to ask also, just kind of bring this up, and find out what the advantages that a discretionary permit would provide in the permitting process over the administrative permit, so I have a clear idea of why that's such a much better approach.
Can I stop you there? Dusty, could you just give a quick administrative versus discretionary, just so that we...
Yeah, so some of the potential advantages of going through discretionary permitting process, again, will be that it provides an opportunity for the council to look at each project on an individual basis and potentially identify additional restrictions and conditions that would be appropriate for that individual project that, that might not get caught with just the standards that we develop. So typically, if it's an activity or an activity that's in a certain location that has the potential to cause adverse impacts, that might be a type of project that you would call a discretionary permit for. It'll allow the council to say, no, yes, yes, but need to meet these additional conditions and restraints. It provides an opportunity for, you know, public comment, public hearing, you know, versus a type of activity where you really expect the standards to be able to avoid the adverse impact from that project, whether environmental or community-wide, community-type. You know, and then it takes away that need for staff to have to spend so much time processing these permits, you know, for you. So it's, it's an additional level review, I would say.
Can I also ask if ethanol is, you consider ethanol a volatile or non-volatile?
I wouldn't know. I assume the state has categories whether...
But there's some, you know, discretionary matters in the other, so I wanted to clarify that. Though, one other thing I'd like to say is that there are some advantages to indoor cultivation, in that it allows for a completely controlled environment when you're creating a medical consumable. It makes, there are certain advantages there that aren't present in an outdoor product. And finally, I'd just like to say, I think in 2017, the discussion about whether cannabis has a place in society is kind of over, and I would ask those who have a vague and undefined objection to it to tell us what, articulate what the objection is, so those of us in the industry and in regulation can figure out how to address that.
Thank you.
Can I also ask you to also submit any of this, like, technical information about hydrocarbon and ethanol?
Send it to Dusty.
To Dusty. That would be great.
I would like to, if you don't mind, I would like to address the last statement of yours to articulate the objections. Starting about the beginning of this century, or even before that, after Prop. 215 was passed, Mendocino County and Willets became Chicago in the twenties. And that's a fact. You know, after, after Prop. 215 sort of started, Measure B in 2000, the, the, the county measure that decriminalized marijuana exacerbated it. And in that period of time, Mendocino County became flooded with people in the marijuana industry. And those of us who lived here, lived in this environment that was not pleasant. Someone was talking about outdoor grows that are somewhere away from everything else where they wouldn't be objectionable. The fact of the matter is that for a period of time in this town, no matter where you were standing in this town, you could smell pot at certain times of the year. You come up, you come up Ridgewood Grade, you come over the hill, as soon as you hit the city limits, you knew that pot was growing in this town. So it made a big impact. We also had home invasions. We also had people growing pot next door to other people. I had my next-door neighbor who was growing pot right on the other side of that fence, ten feet away. He had a gun. He slept out, outside to guard his crop. He had a dog. We had people who were climbing fences, so we had this kind of thing. So it's not a theoretical concept that we have that we hate marijuana. This is what we lived with, and this is what we're trying to undo. Now, I am, I'm personally willing and able to say, okay, this is the way it was, and it's, it's going to be different now. And, and I said that, I mentioned that in our, in our, in our public meetings that we had here before, I spent two hours in a room full of growers, and it was a great experience. It really, really was. But there's a lot of people in this town, fifty percent of them, who don't feel that way yet. We have to sell them. We have to convince everybody that you guys are for real.
All right, let's move it along. Okay, let's move it along with the next speaker.
I just have a quick comment. My comment is about 10A permits, which are dispensary producer permits. There is tons of product here. I mean, there's tons of indoor, there's tons of outdoor. I don't think that's really necessary. If anything, actual distribution, a company that deals with distribution, where people can go in, bring their product, it can be tested, it can go to outlets, retailers, whatever. But when it comes to 10A dispensary producer permits, I kind of feel like they're unnecessary. I really like your idea about some sort of carbon footprint tax, while medical marijuana is not supposed to be taxed itself, maybe something in the permitting process, maybe there could be an applicable tax that is attached to it when it comes to large indoor cultivators. Because I, I could tell by the rudimentary maps where those actual locations were that would be applicable for an indoor cultivation permit, and I couldn't see there being greenhouses there. Just visually, I'm like, I don't see where a greenhouse would be, you know? So those are the industrial spots where it would have to be indoor. So that's just my comment, and I would hope that priority would be given to locals instead of out-of-towners with a lot more resources than people in the local community have when it comes to permits.
Thank you. I didn't get your name, ma'am.
Amanda Extrum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, anybody else from the public?
Really, I just want to thank the city council and the city government for being working on this and pushing this further. I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time now. I understand there's definitely two sides of anything, and whatever Ron mentioned, the all the, all the stigma, all the, all the bad experiences, in my opinion, came from the nonexistence of the framework for the regulation, which caused chaos. And now we actually have a regulation we can, we can follow and take advantage of the economical benefit for the local and try to keep the jobs here and keep the benefit here. And, I mean, this town just overall are a better place, and then you can attract more professionals, doctors, and all the, all the other people that will come after that. So I do think we're on the right track. And if you look around, I mean, this thing, the train is already like picking up speed everywhere, so let's just, again, I know it's a complex issue, and I really appreciate all of it. Thanks.
Anybody else from the public?
Hi, how do you do? I'm Alex Carter, and I'm in Willets, as you see. So I had a simple thought about three years ago when that whole area was burning down. I didn't even hear it, although I was less than fifty feet from the whole thing, the cleanup afterwards, you know? So it depends on what your point of view on the nuisance is, you know? Different people hear different nuisances at different times, whether it's a call to prayer from a, you know, Muslim church five times a day, or, you know, you hear some kind of industrial whatever operation going on. But one thing I wanted to do is to draw a line in the sand between the concepts of...
Hold on one second. Sir, can you do me a favor? Your phone has gone off three times. That's really disruptive. Can you please turn it off? And if anybody else that has a phone, if you could turn it off. All right? Thank you. Sorry about that.
Basically, I've had this whole pyramid of differences and uses between hemp and psychoactive marijuana. I'd come up with, and I was trying to make it easier because Holly was trying to parse the issue, you know, because being a politician is hard. And so it was about how we basically have four distinct uses of hemp, which can be summarized by a car. This is the easy thing to talk about hemp. So you have the car, which if anybody's seen or has smoked, you can actually build things out of hemp. So the car itself can be made out of hemp if you do it right. You have the fuel for the thing, which if you want to do alternative fuels, hemp is the easiest thing to grow. You actually have a fighting chance of there being cars in the future. And you have the driver, who, you know, they're probably wearing some hemp clothing or nothing, but the point is, they can get a lot of it, where they can eat food, and, you know, that's what you need, the fuel for the driver too, which is also made from hemp seed. So cars are sustainable, and hemp is the bottom one, in small numbers. But as for marijuana, you got psychoactive marijuana, which is a drug by any standard. I mean, some people hallucinate a little bit, some people may fork a little bit. I wouldn't know, but the point is, some people, they get this weird, you know, they're predisposed to paranoid schizophrenia, and they sort of go more into it if they use it. So it could be used as a diagnostic tool for psychologists or something, which, again, disadvices them. You probably don't want to use that drug very much if you start to get that reaction. If people are dying, there are two distinct uses for marijuana. They can use it palliatively medicinally because they're going to die anyway, and might get prescribed heroin or something, which is no plan. So, okay, instead of rather probably have them stay alive and use hemp, well, in this case, marijuana recreationally. But, yeah, that's about it. There are about eight uses, and I thought they, one of them is, they both are distinct uses.
All right, thank you. Again, last call, anybody else?
I'm Ben Stevens. I'm a former industrial waste inspector for the city of Santa Rosa, and I just encourage the council, I've seen a couple of these things from different jurisdictions, to definitely do your homework on processing the cannabis. There's a lot to it. There's a lot to existing industries that use a lot of these same methods, that have standard SOPs, that GMPs for industry that exist. So I would just caution against the use of a definition of a word such as volatile, and actually do the scientific homework behind the SOPs and the GMPs for industrial users of processing cannabis. It's here. It's not something that's going to go away. It's the only way that you can actually process food, medical products, in a way that is, for one, even more environmentally friendly than doing a very limited type of non-volatile extraction. Just, I just wanted to go ahead and encourage that for the city council to look at as far as, before you make a decision on the manufacturing of cannabis, that you actually do the homework behind things that already exist in many different municipalities, and there's pretty much a standard operating procedure for each one of those methods.
Ben, do you have some examples of municipalities that have that?
Well, the municipalities that are coming on board right now, Sonoma County being one of them, they are allowing for ethanol production as far as manufacturing. They're also allowing for, like the gentleman said, a hexane-type situation. And that's all based on the chemical properties of the solvent that you're using. Though, it also depends on the equipment that you're using, the engineering behind this stuff, the state is already allowing as far as built-to standards, the standards that already exist. And so what I'm hearing here is, you know, looking at the Type 6 and the Type 7, that's very limited, if you guys went with just strictly a Type 6, that you're going to push out probably ninety percent of the manufacturing. And that is an extremely large part of the growth of the cannabis industry as it is right now. Cannabis cultivation is turning its method away from just offering a flower-type medicine to a concentrated, dosable ability for someone to consume. They know what they're consuming, they know their dosage, and a lot of the cancer treatments, a lot of the actual medical treatments rely on that kind of dosable, you know, product.
Ben, what I'm going to ask is if you have any information, I think if you could route it to Dusty first, that would be a big help.
Sure. I just wanted to state that as far as, it's important, it's actually, in my mind, is coming from industry that does, like enforcement and inspections, that this stuff already exists. Enforcement already exists, it's just finding those SOPs and adopting them in a manner that does not exclude something that is not really understood by a more, I would say, non-plugged-in council, but it's people that are in the industry and the people that actually like, you know, PhD chemists that are being brought into this industry to make those products, that if you do limit to a non-volatile, you're basically limiting to not being able to extract the actual components that are needed for the medicine. So I just, you know, the non-volatile ways of manufacturing don't go into, don't have any kind of a way to dose. So anyway, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, last call. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to bring it back up here. So, Ron, I'll give you a chance, but Mary, Madge, or Sabrina, before I let Ron go at it again.
I have some comments, but I thought Sabrina didn't comment before, maybe she left.
I have a few things. I mean, I know where I'm at on this issue.
And I guess, I guess what I'm looking for from all of you on the council is helping us with direction on our ad hoc, as to which way we go, so that we, you know, amongst the things we were talking about doing is a field trip to a facility, but we frankly wanted to bring it back to the whole council to get some direction before we went off on another tangent and tried to tighten things up, so that we just didn't tell Dusty and Jim, go forth and come back in a couple of different directions.
Okay, so I'll just kind of lay out where I'm coming from. From the people that I hear from, the majority of the people I hear from, they're not in favor of marijuana, and I think that they come from the same type of thought that I have around marijuana. I, I'm not naive. I spent a summer with a relative and lived in the field in Willets as a child, and I can tell you that sometimes when you have those early experiences, it can form your early ideas of what you think of the industry. And it wasn't a pleasant, it wasn't a pleasant summer in that industry. So that's kind of like my early experience with marijuana. On the other hand, as you grow older and hopefully a bit wiser, and you have other things in life that bring about exposure in different ways, you tend to have a different thought. And right now, I'm at the thought that I see that there is definitely a value to marijuana medicinally. My challenge for me, the thing I struggle with is some of the, some of the issues I have, for example, is the buffer is a big deal for me. Whether it's, whether or not the buffer physically keeps people safe or not, I go back to the philosophical issue of the fact that many of us are not comfortable with. Maybe we will be ten years, twenty years from now, two years from now, I don't know. But the buffer, I could never vote in favor of something without, without a minimum of the six hundred feet buffer, just so, just so you know. I'm concerned about the environmental impact. I prefer the idea of the greenhouse, if we could create a greenhouse that doesn't allow for an outdoor smell, but I haven't heard anything that says that we could create a greenhouse without it so to speak sinking of the neighborhood. But I am concerned about the, about this type of business inside an industrial building. I'm concerned about the waste to, that's going to go into our wastewater system. I'm concerned about this type of business in our community. I know that in education, we're struggling to attract quality professionals that want to come to our community and work. I know that the hospital is struggling to attract. I know that this is going to create jobs, but then there are other, there are other parts of our community where they're going to struggle to attract good quality people to employ. So I take that into account. I initially, I'll be honest, initially when I, I thought of dispensaries, my first thought was, no, I don't want any dispensaries. But after I read this over and I listened to people speak this evening, I'm open-minded, I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no, but certainly willing to explore what exactly that entails, yeah.
So, anything else? So basically, as I try to get this direction from you, you want to see some buffers, you're open to the idea of medical dispensaries, and so we should continue.
Yes, I would say continue, but I don't want to also leave the impression that this, I'm locked in, this is where I'm going. I'm just saying that I'm open, I'm open-minded, and I'm still going through my thought process.
You're, go ahead.
One thing, have, have you people on this group thought about the people that are going to grow it in the county, which are right up to the city limits? I mean, we talk about the neighbor that has the smell. If you live in an area, let's say that borders a, the county, somebody could be growing it right next to you, and there's nothing that we can do about it. That's something that, that we're going to have to consider. Also, another thing that, and I really have, in fact, I was one of the original two that didn't want to have anything, but I have listened to people and talked to people and had people come in and talk to me. And I think that you guys are on the right track. I just think that, that we need to really sit down, and like I said earlier, we need to go over this paragraph at a time, so we understand exactly, all of us understand exactly what it means and what it says. And with the people that are here, maybe want to come here again, and, or maybe two or three times, I mean, I don't know. I'm not going to jump into anything. I'm like Sabrina, I'm, I want to know all the facts that I can before I say yes or no or whatever, but I do applaud you people for that. And I also applaud Ron, that he originally did some, and I read his literature, and he did some work also that was very good. But I just think that, that we really need to take it slow and understand everything that we can understand, and I hope I can understand it faster than I can understand computers. Thank you.
Yeah, there are so many, well, first of all, I kind of agree with several comments that have been made about greenhouses. I really would prefer that we use the sun instead of a bunch of electricity to grow things in general. But I also don't know that there is adequate technology available to make greenhouses not emit a lot of odor. So that's the concern we have. And if we find any standards or technology that's available for greenhouses that would allow that, I think I would like to see us look at that again. I also am hearing and would like to get a lot more knowledgeable about what kind of substances are used in the, in the processing and manufacture, because clearly, I believe that there's a lot of very legitimate medical uses, and we need to be able to provide products. And we in this community, I think, should have that opportunity. So, but we're also really concerned about safety, and we don't want, you know, like the meth lab problems, things, buildings blowing up, and our fire department's very concerned about all of that, as, as are we. So just, we need to look into that. The other place that I think is very, there's a lot of shades of gray, is exactly which sensitive receptors are we talking about, and what buffers are reasonable and adequate to protect them. And I really could understand, I wouldn't want to have a dispensary in my next-door neighbor's house, you know, I mean, that's too close, and I wouldn't want it right next door to the park. So I think adding some of the other sensitive receptors to our buffer areas is a good idea, but I don't necessarily think we need six hundred feet for all of them. I think some of it's like, you know, at the park, it isn't a question of, you know, there's a big difference between having it right next door and having it a block or two away, and six hundred feet is quite a lot of distance, especially when you're doing property line to property line. So anyway, I think the committee is willing to struggle with that, but if any of the other three council members have any other guidance about how many sensitive receptors are we talking about, how big of a buffer area are people thinking is important, and then we need to, in drafting the regulation, make sure that it, that it is justified, that it's reasonable, that we're not just arbitrarily saying, you know, a thousand feet, because by the time you add those circles, then nothing will be allowed. I mean, that would be a way to not allow anything, but I don't think that's the intent of what we're trying to do here. We're trying to figure out ways to allow legitimate medical, commercial operations that protect the general public and protect the receptors. And the last thing is, is this question of discretionary versus permitted. And I think, I think we are moving in the direction that we're going to treat marijuana, medical marijuana at this point, the way we would treat liquor stores, or tobacco stores, or anything, any, any other commercial or industrial project. We're moving that direction, and I would therefore like to see some of those uses be simply allowed, subject to the conditions that assure public safety is respected and so forth. So I mean, we're talking about a lot of, a lot of standards that would have to be met. And in general, if we have the zoning, where we think that these are appropriate zoning districts, and we have the buffers, and we have the standards, then in general, I'd prefer that the staff be able to make those determinations. To have every single permit have to come up to the city council to make a decision about it seems somewhat onerous, and it, no, it's going to up the, the cost of even applying for a permit quite a bit, and it's going to discourage people. So if we, if we do think these are legitimate businesses and we want to have businesses in Willets with all of those, you know, zoning, overlay, standards, et cetera, unless there's a really good reason to have them all be, to have them in discretionary, I would prefer that we not go that way. So that's, that's my bias on it.
Ron?
First of all, I have to agree with Sabrina that I have the same general opinion about this whole thing. If I was king of the world and I could make marijuana just go away, I would do it. But I can't, and I'm not. So the reality of the thing is, is that whether we like it or not, we need to take our, we need to take hold of it, put our arms around it, and make it what we can live with. And that's why we're going through this process. We're not going to make it go away. We went through the, we went through the thing about trying to ban it in the town completely, and clearly, that just wouldn't work. We're, so, so that's why we're, I think it's important that we do this and do it intelligently. We don't have to like it, but, you know, I think if we can make it work for us, then, you know, it can work. We keep talking about the dollars that are going to flow into our economy, you know, how, I think some people have the, the impression that the, the city is going to hit this windfall, that we're going to solve our budgetary problems, or we're going to do all this, all this good stuff is going to happen, but it's not. It's really not, because in fact, the money that's going to flow in from, from the marijuana industry to the city is going to be used to mitigate the effects of everything the marijuana industry does, and that's by law. Like I said, we cannot pave streets, we can't build playgrounds, we can't, you know, hire more city staff unless it's for enforcement. It's got to be very specific. So it's going to be like a zero-sum game. Whatever money comes in will have to be spent to offset any impacts that the industry is going to have. So it's, we need to understand that. Now, from the non-governmental aspect, yeah, there will be jobs created, and hopefully there will be decent-paying jobs, and employment is something that this, this city and this region needs badly. So, yeah, there are, there are benefits to that, and I like that. But I think we also need to keep in mind that marijuana is not, I want to choose my word carefully, because I'm going to get some, some looks. It's not, it's not a normal commodity. You know, in our history, in our personal history, it's not like, you know, selling potato chips. It's probably not even like selling alcohol, mostly because it's illegal, it's still federally illegal, so there is that, that thing going on there. And quite frankly, it's a big question mark, what's going to happen in the coming months with the new attorney general, the new administration in Washington? Who knows? I mean, they, they may decide to send the DEA in here and camp out in Mendocino County, and everything we're doing here right now may just go down the drain. We don't know. But there is that possibility. But it's not a panacea. But it's not a panacea. You know, let's, let's understand that, let's be clear about it. And there are a lot of people who feel very viscerally offended by it. And maybe not so much because of the thing itself, it's about what it meant to this community over the years. And that's, that's, that's a hard lesson that we all have to get over. And so far, personally, I'm seeing some, some changes in the marijuana industry and the people who are in it, and I've created a lot more respect for them than I had previously. But, you know, that's me, I'm open-minded. But there are a lot of people in this town who, you know, they're, they're still not there yet, and it may take them a while. So you guys, you have a selling job to do. And I can't overemphasize this, you have to show that you are, you know, the greatest, most civic-minded people in the world. And that's, and you're going to have to convince everybody, you know, we can pass whatever we want to do here, but it's the industry that has to convince the public that you're okay.
Good. So I'm kind of getting from...
Could I just, I'm curious, because I heard, I heard Madge say this, that my thoughts are that we shouldn't have discretionary permit process?
Just that we would minimize how many things have to go through.
Right. I'm in favor of an administrative process. I'm just curious if the rest of the council is. I don't like the idea of having discretionary power. I like the idea, these are the rules, meet the criteria.
I guess, anybody else want to weigh in? Or maybe I'll...
No, I agree. I guess my feeling is that, and as we do our research, we may find that with most of it, administrative would be fine. Maybe there's certain, certain aspects of the business that need to come in as a discretionary. So that's my feeling, that I would prefer an administrative process where we lay out the rules and everybody knows what the rules are. And it makes it easier for staff, it makes it easier for everybody. But there may be some issues that we, as we do our research, that have to come before us because, whether it's a land use zoning or something else, because it, I'd like to tell you, it's all cookie cutter and it's all going to work that way, but probably not. And so, so that's my, my two cents on that. I guess I, what I'm getting from the councils, you want the ad hoc to continue working on these issues. Obviously, the receptors are still something you want us to look at. And again, we wanted, again, before we put a lot more effort into this, to tell you what we were doing and get direction to either continue or not continue, but I'm hearing, I'm assuming consensus-wise, that we should continue.
I would agree to that. I think you're going in the right direction, you got some good stuff that you presented. I raise some questions that I feel should be...
And Dusty, maybe the next time we'll have a better, bigger map or something so that... Well, and again, I get it, what we were doing and, and, because we've been working on this, so...
I have just a question for the other council members too, and that is, assuming that we add some other sensitive receptors to the, to the list besides just the schools. I mean, the schools is the state mandated, that's the floor from which we can't, we can't deviate from that. But if, assuming we add some other ones, are you open to having not necessarily 600 feet buffers, depending on what kind of use and what kind of impact that could have on neighborhoods, or churches, or whatever? So that, for example, we, the ad hoc could say, we need 100 feet for a testing lab, but we need 600 feet for a dispensary, and we need...
And Madge, maybe I could piggyback on some of our discussions, it sounded like some cities did just that for certain things, it wasn't all or nothing. Is that correct, Dusty?
Are the council members?
Is that your recollection on some of this?
Yeah, I believe there was examples where they buried the buffer depending on the activity in central...
The city of Ukiah just did, so I believe.
So...
I believe there were 250 feet, according to the facility for dispensers. They might adapt to their buffer standard if they allow other types of channels.
So as a, as a whole council, would you like to see us examine some of those options?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, I would say that it, you know, when you talk about reducing the radius, it would have to be almost a case-by-case basis. I mean, I wouldn't want to make a blanket statement saying that we can go to 250 feet or whatever. Because some neighborhoods, some locations, it could be improper to do that. So I, I'm not prepared to say, yeah, reduce it.
No, no, I'm guessing, I guess what I want to do is be able to bring back examples of what other cities have done.
Examples would be fine, yeah.
So that you could see what the impact would be.
Yeah, because some other city may have an example where they've done just that, you know, 600 for schools, but 300 in this particular case, or whatever. And I'm curious too, because...
It would depend on the case, we'd have to, we'd have to look at it, I think.
Yeah, so I wanted, so tell you what, I get the final say as the mayor here, but it sounds like we're going to continue with, with our ad hoc, and we've got some direction from the council to continue on this. Again, I wanted to make it clear that while recreational marijuana, Prop 64 is passed and there's some things going on there, we wanted to get through the medical aspect of this as we move forward, so that we have some ordinance that we can present to the community, to the other councils, so that down the road, so that we have this, we're trying to move forward, we're trying to keep in mind, like some of the folks up here, I got to tell you, on a given day, I have some folks that want, like Mr. Friend, kind of an everything goes, and I've got other folks that don't want it anywhere near. So our charge up here is to find that, I guess, common ground for our community, so that we make all our community as happy as we can make them, and some obviously are not going to be happy with it. I'd like to thank some of you guys, when we were looking at these volatile solvents, we had some concerns, and so that gives us something that between our fire department and our research, we need to look at. We obviously, we're not looking to discourage business, I got to tell you, we're kind of for business, but at the same time, keeping our firemen, our police, and our community safe when they respond to fires, or those sort of things, I want to make sure that we don't have issues there. And I think that's something we want to be cognizant of.
Well, we do have gas stations in town, that's pretty volatile stuff too, so I guess there are safeguards.
So, and I'll tell you, I'm coming from the angle that a couple months ago, I was on the other side of the fence, and I enforced laws against this. And now in my new role, my job is to be fair to all aspects of the community within the confines of the law. So that's what I'm looking at. So, thank you very much. I'm going to call a 10-minute break, and then we'll continue.
You know, Wayne, go ahead.
Okay. I sincerely want to commend and respect the ad hoc committee and the previous committee. I attended a couple of meetings, public meetings with Ron and with Holly, and did not attend any meetings with Jerry or Madge. I think Dusty's done great work. And when I leave this evening, I want to feel very confident that the city council has given clear direction to the ad hoc committee and to Dusty that this thing can move forward, and we have a little more concise discussion next time. I think we do need to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. All right. Item 3B, discussion and possible direction regarding development of a meter buyback policy.
All right. So as you see from the agenda summary, we received a request from Willets Elementary Charter School to, for the city to consider buying back 20 meters that were purchased by the previous property owner. At the time that they were purchased, that property owner wanted to do a subdivision on that parcel. I think that was prior to the real estate market falling through, and so that development never happened. He eventually rented or leased the land to the charter school, and they have since purchased, recently purchased the property after occupying that parcel for, I think, three or four years now.
The lease, yeah.
Yeah. So they don't have a need for the 20 meters that were purchased way back when. And what they are interested in doing is having, having the city buy those meters back. We don't have a policy that addresses that. We've checked around with other jurisdictions and have not been able to come up with another jurisdiction that has such a policy. Nonetheless, we did give this some thought. And so we've, we've presented a couple scenarios to you if you want to consider a buyback program. One is to purchase meters back from the property owner for full price of the amount paid at the time of the initial purpose, purchase from the city, or at 50% of the amount paid at the time of the initial purchase. In both cases, the property owner would be responsible for the cost of staff time and materials to remove the water meters from the system per the current fees, fee schedule rates, plus a $25 fee per meter to cover administrative time. They would not, what we're proposing under this scenario is, they would not receive any refund monies until our costs were covered. And they would only, after that, they would receive refund monies on a per meter basis. So we wouldn't give them a full refund right now if we decided to do this buyback program. Instead, we would refund their money as we sell meters. And that could take a year, it could take five years, it could take 10 years. But I also want to say that we are not in need of meters. We're in a good position with our water system and with our supply of available connections. And so there's really no incentive for us to do a buyback. But if, if you wanted to consider it, we've offered those two scenarios, and of those two, staff would, would recommend the 50% option over the full price refund.
A question, would the reduction in their monthly bill for those, that would, that would start right away, but you wouldn't give them the 50% or the whatever?
That's correct. So because they're not using those 20 meters, they are paying a standby fee, which is $10 per meter, per month, so $200 a month. That would be eliminated.
Right away.
Right away. Because what we would do is, we would go in and remove those meters. And the reason for that is, and the reason for the standby fee, is it covers the cost of maintenance. Because even though they're not using those meters, it's hooked up to our water line, and if something were to occur, we need to have, we need to...
So they would immediately save that monthly...
200 dollars.
Right. But then they wouldn't get any reimbursement of whatever the amount we decide on, 50% or whatever, of the actual meter, until we, the city, was able to resell that to somebody else?
Right. So they, in this scenario, they would receive 50% refund for the amount that they were purchased for way back when.
How much is that amount?
Do you recall what that is?
Talking a couple hundred dollars, alright?
No, more than that.
More than that.
I think it was 1,800 or...
I think John knows.
Oh, oh, John.
Capital approval fee on those meters was 1,500.
1,500. So we'd be looking at, what, 30,000 or 15,000?
And the refunds will be less city costs to remove them.
Right. And these meters, I'm guessing, are the old meters? The old, didn't we upgrade the meters since those were installed? I mean, and now we have meters that, that the meter reader can read remotely.
These meters have the electronic element on them.
I think they're their old ones.
That's what I'm guessing, because it was, it was 10 years ago, at least, I'm thinking. So, so we, we really wouldn't need the meters, there's no reason...
Do they have value, I guess is what you're saying, right? Do they have value? Or...
I mean, on the surface they do, but they don't have a value to us in the sense that we don't need them.
And we wouldn't use them, even if we put them back in inventory.
Right.
You wouldn't use them again at some point. And they've been out there, they're probably, I don't know, are they in pristine condition?
Yes. They haven't, they have not been used, and they're in a vault. And the vault was put in at the time that they were put in to protect them, because there was no...
So could they be reused, I guess, if I...
They, theoretically, yes, they can be reused.
But they probably wouldn't be.
They're usable meters, but they are different from what we currently are using.
Could we sell them to some...
You can't drive by and take the message on them, you have to literally get out and look at them.
Could we sell them to some other...
I think there's the potential to do that.
Well, if they're not, if the charter school is not going to get any money from us until we sell them, it really isn't, it really isn't much of an issue, because if they sit here, we're not out of pocket. My question is, what does it cost to remove one or are all of the ones they want removed?
They would have to pay for that.
Right.
What'd be our costs, so whatever the staff time is. So I'm going to assume, John, that in this particular case, it's not like Ron has an extra meter and I have an extra meter here, and our staff's going to jump from one end of town to the other. It'd be staff time to go and dig up 19 meters from the one that they're using, right?
Yeah, and it's a little more involved than that. It's not just a matter of removing the meters from the vaults in the sidewalk. Our, our ordinance requires that we go back to the main and abandon those at the main, which means we're going to have to open the street back up. And we built a special manifold for this property so that we could come over with some fairly large connections at the main and split that into a bunch of connections at the sidewalk. And so we're going to have to backtrack and take that system back out.
So you're talking about major street repair?
Yes.
So let me ask you this. You said that there is this standby fee of $10 a month, and that's because periodically staff has to go and look at the meters, or what's...
Do maintenance and repairs.
So they actually go to the meters and do something to them?
And let's say there's a leak in one of the service lines. We have to address the leak, whether there's water going through the meter or not.
So I guess my question, the follow-up question would be, what would happen if we just forgot about the meters, let them stay where they are, and forgive this $10 a month fee? So they, they could save $200 a month. That would be a savings to them. And basically, if we're not going to use the meters again anyway, and they have no real value to us, we're just going to let them rot in the ground until somebody else comes along these... I mean, is that feasible?
Or we could put it down those handles, we could put some kind of contingency in there that should, should that property, because you don't know, the charter school could move. I mean, they could potentially move a year, a year term now. We could put something in there where, should they move and they want to use those water meters, that maybe they pay a fee for the time that we weren't collecting that $10 a month. I just want to make sure that, you know, should they move, and the next person that occupies that property, we don't want to be waiving, we don't want to be waiving future rights to collect on those water meters.
Well, that would just be waiving to them.
Just to, because it's a school.
Yeah, well, because they own the meters right now. But if they sold the property, then everything's off the table. We start over again. I would think.
Larry wants to...
John, are they transferable? In other words, if I was going to start something up, could I buy them from the charter school and install them? I mean, is it...
Larry, I don't think we have a policy that covers that. I don't, I don't think we've ever anticipated that one property owner would sell a meter to another property owner. I know in the past, we've had a person that owned several properties try and move those meters around to their individual properties, and that was a big problem, and it created a lot of trouble.
So the answer is, so the answer is probably not, nobody's going to be able to come in and buy them? And so they give...
I think we'd have to address something like that specifically. And the, I think, the other thing I think we need to keep in mind is, if these are the meters without the electronic element to them, there's very little chance that we'd resell those meters and put them back into our system, because by our system standard now, they're obsolete.
I understand that.
So what do you think about what I had asked before? Is that a feasible thing to...
Well, I mean, first of all, we have to address our fee structure. And, and so you're suggesting making an exemption for a water customer?
Well, because we're not servicing it anymore.
So what about all the other water customers that have meters that are not used?
Well, but I think in the case where, let's say, I go and buy the 20 meters because I'm going to build something, and then I'm paying the standby because I'm with the thought that I'm going to still maybe build one day. And so at one point, that idea would have been, I was holding a commodity, because we, we struggled with having enough meters and we were... we struggled with having enough meters and we were potentially looking at not releasing those. But what if I forfeit my right with, with that, must making the, the standby fee go away, they forfeit their right. It's, as Ron would say, whether we dig them up or leave them there, you can't come back later on and say, here's my twenty meters I had on the table. If you don't want to pay the standby fee, you are forfeiting forever your right to access those meters again.
I don't think that we can do that. I think that we would have to go in and, and have a re-hookup fee.
No, no, but I guess what I'm saying is they, whether they stay or we hook them up, if they're not going to be the standby, because the idea is that you're paying the standby to keep, basically keep the project alive so that you're telling everybody, no, I may still need them. Because in the case of when we were basically in a water mortuary, if you had those twenty meters, they probably had a value, whether you sold them back to us or you-
Not the meters themselves, but the idea of having the-
Yeah, the idea. But, so I could have come back in at a certain point and said, hey, look, I'm willing to give those to Kevin over there for his project, or to Bruce, but, or to Wayne, or to Bill. And can we do something, even if the city brokered a deal or whatever? But if I just basically say, I'll waive, if you waive my standby fee, I waive my, my right to those meters. They're basically, they're going to be disconnected and left in the dirt or dug up, but, yeah, I guess I'm just-
Well, so they are, I mean, they would need to be abandoned at our main, as John was saying. And that requires the work that he described with going into where the meter is as well as to the main.
So there's a cost associated, so that-
So the question is whether or not they have to be physically removed, given the fact that we will probably never have to use those meters again. So you're talking about two separate things here. The actual meter, which we could abandon, leave in the ground, and forgive this ten dollar monthly fee because there's no service being performed. And on the other hand, you have now freed up twenty meters for general use in the, in the community for new projects.
But you haven't.
If we have such a thing.
But you haven't, because they're still attached and they're still there.
Well, no, not really. I mean, if you're saying that they, they don't exist anymore, I mean, we're just burying them, forget about them, they don't exist. I mean, I don't know that we even have a, that we even know how many meters are available or allocated, we'll say, in this town. You know, have we, I don't, I think we've already found that, we haven't reached our limit yet. We still have a couple hundred more that we can-
We have four hundred and eighty connections that we can make.
Okay, so this would be twenty more?
Correct.
I guess, I would think that we also want to look forward too. Now, I, I also want to make sure that we cover our costs and that somehow or another, if we have to go in and dig up the street, we, we gotta cover our costs.
Exactly.
But at the same time, there is some advantage that, this is the worst year to actually make this comparison, but maybe five years from now, we're back in drought city again and all of a sudden, they may have that value again. Or the fact that we can now reallocate those meters. But, I mean, I guess my question to you would be, how do we recoup our costs and be fair to all the ratepayers and be fair to this, this particular ratepayer? But at the same time, how do we, because I guess the fairest thing is to make sure that the, that the enterprise account is made whole in some form or other, whether, because we can't just send people out to do work. And, you know, when, when they were installed, the, somebody paid the city to install them and we covered our costs. But now if you have to come in and dig them up-
So the idea of simply relieving them of their monthly standby doesn't add up in my mind at this point because we have to go in and do work, some major work.
Well, that was the question. I mean, would we have to do the work if we just abandoned them and left them in place?
Yes.
Yeah, so what about-
We would have to do work?
So, I don't know what, so, John, what's a roundabout figure that it would cost to do this, just, just a guesstimate? To go in and do the work we need to do?
To, to abandon, to abandon them at the main-
In place?
Five to ten?
So-
Five, ten thousand?
So we waive the fee once we recover our costs?
There's a possibility that we could approach the manufacturer and possibly we'd sell them back to the manufacturer. The reason they're obsolete for our system is because we don't, we don't use that type of meter anymore.
Right.
Not that there's not a bunch of them out there still.
So the meter is still good.
But we weren't, we wouldn't use those meters in a new connection, for example. We're, we're geared towards and going towards, like Larry said, the electronic reading where you just go by. And the difference between that and stopping and pulling the lid on the vault and reading an individual meter, there's quite a bit of difference.
So what if we, I mean, I guess I'll throw it out, don't try to raise words of emotion, but what if we say, you keep paying your standby fee until we either recoup our cost or once we dig these meters up and we have a buyer for them, that we basically made the city whole and at that point, we're square? And I don't know if that-
But that would take two to four years. So are we saying that the city would basically front the money for tearing up the-
No, no, I'm saying that we go, we, I guess we do the work, but they're still responsible for paying the standby fee until such a time as we recoup our costs.
Yeah, but the standby fee wouldn't-
Which would take four to four years.
Yeah, standby fee wouldn't cover the cost of removing them. So it would still be money fronted by the city.
Well, no, you said that that would be about five thousand, right?
Between five and ten thousand.
So, so let, let me be clear here. Maybe I'm misunderstanding something. If we left the meters where they are and just walked away from them-
We still have a maintenance cost.
What work, what work would have to be done?
We still have a maintenance cost.
Forget the maintenance cost. I mean, that's what we're saying, abandon them.
No, no, but we still have, we still can't just ignore it. It'd be like having a pipe in your backyard that potentially could, you have to go make sure it's not leaking at any certain point.
You have to check them each month to make sure there isn't something leaking. I mean, it's still a cost.
Out of the meters, is that what, is that what the maintenance cost is? Is that what the maintenance-
And we may develop leaks in, in, in the feeder lines to these meters.
Well, well, that's in the lines, though. If there is no meter there, I guess what-
If there's no meter there, then we remove the line. So we no longer have a maintenance issue because we have no line.
Okay, so the maintenance issue is-
That's why our code says that we cap it at the main.
Okay, the main, the issue, and, and trying to understand this, you know, we have water lines all over the place, we have feeder lines coming in, and we have meters. Now, the meter is a point of a potential leak because it's, it's connections, correct? I mean, is that why that's leakable?
Well, but from that point, every fitting back to the main has that same potential.
Okay, fine. But the, but if, if the meter, if the meter is not in the line, let's say we connected water lines to residences, to buildings, without a meter, there would still be connections in, in the hookup, correct?
And there'll still be maintenance.
And each one of those connections, so, so the maintenance doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the meter itself?
But you wouldn't necessarily have to do maintenance if there was a connection?
Well, I don't know, I'm hearing that we would because we still have connections.
Well, if they didn't exist.
Wait, wait, wait.
Then our code requires that you abandon that service at the main. So if we take the meter out, then we take the service out. Then we no longer have the maintenance-
So, okay, okay. So you actually, you have to go in and physically remove the lines and, and cap them up?
And sometime you have to go all the way across the road.
Okay, fine, no, I, I'll just, that, that's what I wasn't understanding, that you actually have to do physical work.
Yes. And, and the other part of this is, it's in our code. So if you want to make a change to that, that's going to entail making a change to our code.
Okay. So in that case, I mean, I would say, I, I, I would be in favor of helping them out to helping them to relieve, you know, their costs. And the only way I'm seeing this as possible is for you to contact the manufacturer, see if they're willing to buy them back, and then figure out how much it would cost to remove the meters, send them back to the manufacturer, and, you know, deduct all of that, and then whatever the net is, it is. And it could be that we would, I mean, I don't know, we, we might be able to work out some money to send back to them for that. But the main thing is, they would be relieved of their ten dollar monthly fee.
Yeah, Chad, or you have it. Go ahead, man. I think that it's going to be up to the charter school to decide whether it makes sense for them to upfront pay all of the city's costs to remove the meters and back, you know, all of that that is required in order to retire those meters completely. In which case, if they're willing to do that, then once that work is done, the ten dollars per meter standby goes away. Then, as an added bonus, if we could sell those meters to somebody, basically what your staff report is suggesting is if, if we at that point could sell those meters back to the manufacturer, obviously, we're not going to use them here, then, then they could get some percentage of that cost, that, you know, sales price, and we can dicker about what that percent is. But I, it's, they have to decide, you know, is a two hundred dollars a month savings worth putting upfront, you know, maybe five to ten thousand dollars?
But that's what I'm saying, I don't see, see if anybody would have to put up that money. I think before we move anything, we first of all, check and see if we can sell the meters back to the manufacturer. If it's a no-go, then forget about it, you know, it's not a deal. If it is a go, now we've sold the meters and the money's going to flow, you know, there might be a little lag between the time that the meters are pulled out and sold back, but at least you're not talking about several years. It could happen within a couple of weeks or something.
But I think that the applicant to make that change has to front the, the upfront costs of the city doing the work.
Why?
Because it's, other, they've paid for the meters. We have, we have a lot of vacant properties around that have meters. If they all wanted to do this, we would have to make sure that they all met the same standard. You know, they're, they might be only one meter at a time instead of twenty all at once, but you can't just, you know, make an exception.
Well, I don't see this as an exception. What I'm saying is, is that we find out first of all, if we have a market for the meters. If we don't have a market for the meters, then we forget about the whole thing.
But don't you think that it should, should be the charter school's responsibility to see if there's a market for the meters rather than the-
They may not have the, I mean, I think it's an easy enough phone call, right?
Yeah.
What do you think, John? That we could do, just because they may not know who to call.
I'm, I'm not talking about a market, market, I'm just talking about this one-
Just a, a call or two.
Yeah, the manufacturer tells us, hey, those things have been, they're so old, we don't have anybody that would want them, so that's an answer.
But on the other hand, if the charter school, even if there isn't a market, and basically these are just going to be thrown in a warehouse or recycled metal, whatever it is, that if they want to do that and they figure they're going to have two thousand four hundred a year savings and they're going to be there for ten more years, hey, it's worth it to them. So in a way, the question of whether they, you know, whether they think they can, whether we think it can be resold or not is, it's still their decision. They still have to pay the cost of removing those meters if they're going to get the benefit of not having the ten dollar standby.
But we don't have to make them make that decision unless we know what the bottom line is.
It's worth a phone call for this.
I think we can find out, it's simple enough to do, find out if we can sell the meters, and then we tell the, the charter school, here's the deal. We can pull the meters out of the ground, we can sell them ourself, you're going to pay us X number of dollars to remove them, you're going to save two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars a month. Do you want to do it or not?
All right, so Adrian.
So what I would, rather than you taking any action tonight, let staff contact the manufacturer first, and then we will contact the charter school and have a discussion with them, and then bring this back to the council.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one more point of this because, and I'm sure you all realize this, but I haven't heard it mentioned, and I, and I think it's important to note that the money we're talking about in refunding isn't simply the cost of a meter. It's a capital improvement fee, and we use that fee to extend our system. So theoretically, that money's already been spent on the greater system. Just, just so you understand that. A meter itself is not worth fifty hundred dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we were in the middle of a drought, we were down to, we need three meters, then it may have some sort of value associated, but right now it-
Okay, so you're saying the meter itself might be, the meter itself, if it's a buyback situation to the manufacturer, it might get us, let's say, a hundred dollars. But we have already put in a thousand dollars to put it in place and to take it out. Is that, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is the capital improvement fee goes toward the, to the system overall.
Well, we're not going to recoup-
And spent to renew and, and extend it, the system that we've got.
Yeah, no, I, I get that.
The value of the meter itself is just a few hundred.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I get that, but it's the idea that the only money we can recover is this small amount for the meter itself. We will never recover the labor it took to put it in there in the first place.
From my, from my perspective, the only, the only gain you're going to have is the value of the meter itself minus the time and material-
Right.
-we spend to abandon those meters.
Thank you, John. I think Adrian has direction, so. Let's move on to item four, consent calendar. We pulled item A and B. So we have B, C, and E. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
B, C, and E.
Sorry, B, C, and E.
I'll second.
All right, motion to second?
I'm sorry.
Madge, and second by Ron. All right, roll call.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes, Strong?
Yes.
Ornstein?
Yep.
Stransky?
No.
Magg, Johnson?
Yes. All right. Information reports.
We're done.
And right to appeal persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council have the right to review of that decision by the court. The city has adopted section ten nine four point six of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to ninety days, the time within which decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. All right, commissions and agencies. We sit as the planning commission and the successor agency, and we don't have anything, so city manager.
All right. The main thing I wanted to report on is we held an educational forum last night in council chambers, co-hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and the city regarding ADA issues. And it was geared towards our business, local business community, stemming from a lawsuit that one of our local businesses had received a month or two ago. And, and he was very proactive about wanting to learn more about the issues and bring it to light, and so he contacted the Chamber of Commerce and the city to coordinate some sort of effort, and so that resulted in last night's forum. We had Gary Waters up here, who's an architect and a certified access specialist working out of Santa Rosa, and I think we had about thirty-five people or so in attendance last night. My impression was that, I, I thought that he did a great job presenting, but it's a very complex issue and there is a lot of information, and so I feel like we just barely scratched the surface, and I think a lot of people felt that way as well. We have information and we'll be getting further information to share with the chamber and push that out to the-
It was also televised by Channel Three.
It was. Okay, that's news to me. We had it videotaped to get-
Oh, sorry, was it, or they're going to, they're going to tape it and broadcast it?
No. So it was videoed last night for the purpose of having a video.
Oh, okay.
Not to be broadcast, because there were a lot of people that couldn't attend, and so we thought this would be a good way that they could-
Oh, okay, I was on the pressure to be-
...view the meeting in addition to the materials that were handed out. So we will be working along with the chamber to continue to provide informational updates to our business community, and we've been talking about the next steps. And one thought is to have kind of a listening session between our businesses and our disabled population so that there can be a better understanding on both sides of that coin. This is obviously a very challenging time for our businesses, so the idea that there's going to be another expensive issue that they have to address is daunting to them, but I think that most, if not all, of our business people really want to do the right thing for our community, and our community includes disabled people. So I just wanted to give that brief update.
Will there be a follow-up on that, or is everybody on their own at this point?
No, there will be a follow-up. The, so individual businesses could choose to have an inspection from the certified access specialist. He's just one of many throughout the state. And then they will receive a report specific for their particular business and facility, and they can use that as their own roadmap to creating a- and facility, and they can use that as their own roadmap to creating a plan for the low-hanging fruit, if you will, as well as long, more longer-term projects.
Look like the chamber is circulating a survey to see how much interest there was-
Right.
So, that if they were to bring somebody here to see, I guess, the way the gentleman explained, that not just him, but other ones, sometimes when they come into a community, they can spread the cost out, and it could be a little cheaper than if you individually contracted it.
Right, exactly. And, and then, he mentions some, one of the things in this CAS report that an individual business would get is, he suggested that, just like your tax person or your, you know, your accountant, that you would want to contact them, the inspector that you used on an annual basis to see if there's any new laws or updates that you need to be aware of. And so, that was one specific thing that, as, you know, the city and the chamber working together, that we can get that annual update and push that out to the business community.
Good, good first step.
Yeah.
Thank you for the effort.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Uh, no, not tonight. Our water system's good. Our storm drains, drains have done well with all the rain that we've been having, so we're just very fortunate that we're not dealing with the same issues that many other communities are dealing with.
I'd like to ask you a question. Maybe I should ask, well, what's our dam look like? Looking at the dams that have been going on around the state, are we, has it been inspected lately?
Not, not in the last couple of years. I believe the last inspection, I want to say, was five or six years ago.
Right.
Which is within-
That's pretty. I mean, that would be considered recent.
Okay.
All right. Department recommendations. City clerk?
Nothing to add.
All right, finance?
I'll just say quickly that I've been meeting with department heads to go over their mid-year budgets of those numbers. We'll be coming back to you within the next council meeting, hopefully the next one that possibly queue. And at the conference that I was at two weeks ago, I had come to you like, I think, a month or so ago and told you that CalPERS was increasing our rates. Well, they did increase the percentage rates, but then they decided now that they should also increase our side fund. So, I'll have better numbers for you, but the side fund, they're going to do ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent over the next five years. And it's just not going to be pretty. Just want to give you that heads up. You'll have better numbers, but-
Is this something that is necessary, or is it just, I mean, what, what's the reason for all that?
The reason is that they're not making the money that they anticipated with their investments, so they-
Really? The way the market's going?
Well, in the past few years, they have not made their discount rate.
Oh, well.
Legal?
Yep.
All right. John, do you have anything? Dusty? All right. I guess we're going to city council committee reports, League of Cities. There's a meeting coming up in March. I've got to make a, I guess, a reservation to go down there. And AMCO?
AMCO will meet on the sixth.
Okay. EDFC?
Nothing to report. Do you imagine?
No. I'm trying to remember when the next meeting is.
March ninth.
Okay.
Emswa?
We had a special meeting and part of it was minor adjustments for the budget, but the main one is, we're still struggling with the director who is resigning and trying to create a process for finding a replacement.
Is she going to stay in place until a replacement is found?
She's willing to stay in for a while, but she doesn't want to have that get abused and-
Yeah.
MTA?
There was a meeting today at one thirty. I was here and apparently, it was canceled.
That was broken down at the south end of town, too, so.
That's probably why it was canceled.
Laughco will meet again, I think, I would say the sixth. I think that's Monday the sixth, if I got the day right. Finance committee, we haven't met. And Water, Wastewater Systems Committee, I don't think we've met. Rebite Ed, I think we're still-
March fourteenth.
March fourteenth. I'm on that committee. Do we have a time?
Not yet. We'll probably be three o'clock.
Okay. And I guess we'll have to set another cannabis meeting, or we have a field trip we're looking at. Have you been able to pin that down?
It's not going to happen this week, but probably next week. I'll be in contact.
All right. Count Trans, don't think we met with them. And JPA feasibility study, we haven't done that yet. Council member reports and recommendations. Do you guys have anything?
I have a couple things.
Okay.
I just wanted to formally extend for those people who may not be at this evening's meeting. I run into women every day that don't know that we have a Women in Business group that meets the first Wednesday of every month, and our next meeting is Wednesday, March first, eight fifteen. It's upstairs in the Arts Center. If you're not a member of the Chamber of Commerce, the first time you can come in, it doesn't cost anything. Anybody who wants to reach out to me that's a woman in business or works for a business, I'd be happy to bring them as a guest. The next thing is, I did attend the ADA last night, and although I'm choosing not to have a professional come in and assess my business, I think that this was valuable for many of us that are business owners. And for me, I'm going to go through and read the regulations myself, and I'm going to write out a written plan of how I'm going to address maybe some issues and make improvements. And one of the reasons for taking that route versus paying for a professional coming in is because of the cost. So, I'm hoping that in our next ADA work session, we'll be talking, I was sharing with Adrian, it would be nice if there were some, a little bit more information. I think at the ADA meeting last night, it was kind of like the broad overview of what we need to do. And I think some of us in the business community are looking for maybe some cheat sheet kind of information to get us started into making some changes. Also, I took a tour of the senior center. That was really nice. I learned that the gift shop is the bread and butter of what keeps the senior center going, and that they're a nonprofit, and that they're losing money. And the main reason that they're losing money is the senior center is doing more than just serving seniors a place for them to go and get together, but they're doing more of the social services type things. And they're getting a lot of people that are in need, and the county only gets them a certain amount of money. So, the senior center is in need of donations, whether it be monetary or to the thrift shops so that they can help stay in the black. And then, my last item is that I've been told that there's going to be a town hall discussion next month, and that the topic, the topic is going to be immigration, which I know is a great concern to maybe form our community.
Do you know a date for that?
Um, I do know a date, but I don't know it off the top of my head. Let me look.
No, it's a Sunday, but I can't remember.
It is a Sunday, and I do have it on the calendar. It is Sunday, March nineteenth, and I don't know the time. Four o'clock.
Yeah.
Four o'clock, thank you.
Okay. They were supposed to email me, but I never got their emails, so. Anybody else have anything?
Good, good and welfare?
We're-
Was she?
Yeah, we're-
We're up to that now.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to mention that the concert that was going to be February
eleventh due to an illness got postponed. It's going to be March fourth, and that is the Trio of Trios, and that's a benefit for the food bank. That's why it's relevant to everybody because it's a good benefit. But if you like music, the trios are a lot of fun. The other thing is that on March fourth, earlier at noon, is a brown bag lunch get-together. We had one last month, and it was kind of brainstorming about positive actions that, that we can do to improve the community and our resources here. And a lot of ideas got, kind of listed. And then, this coming on March fourth at noon will be more trying to see how people want to plug in to actually get some of these things enacted rather than just ideas. So, it's sort of a, yeah. And that's going to be at the Willet's Hub, which used to be the Environmental Center.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to let everyone know that Howard Hospital has hired a new CEO. The announcement just came out this afternoon. His name is Jason Wells, and he will be starting on March twenty eighth. I sit on the hospital board, and so I was involved in the, this recruitment effort, because it started basically right when I came on the board. I was just very impressed with the hospital's effort from their, you know, corporate to the medical staff, to the governing, the local governing body, just the process that they went through. They brought forward, I think it was six high-caliber candidates, and each candidate came to the community for a two to three-day visit and met with a real estate person and toured the community and met with different, you know, whether it was staff or doctors or, you know, administration and then the governing body. And so, just very impressive process, and it has paid off in spades. It was a unanimous decision between the different groups associated with the hospital as to this candidate, and they just finished the process.
Is he going to be the CEO for our hospital?
Yes.
Not, not the whole?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
His name sounds familiar. Has he been involved locally?
No, he's coming from, I think it's North Carolina.
Is he part of the Adventist group?
Uh, I don't believe he was, but he, what race is it?
Anybody else have anything for Good Wolfher?
I just want to mention that we had two wonderful events since we last met, and that was Sip Some Soup and then the Rotary Crab Fest, and just want to thank those community members who organized those, those events that benefited our community as a whole.
All right. Well, we have closed session, conference with-